Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you all for coming out in this deluge that's happening outside. Welcome to our monthly business meeting of Athens-Clark County Mayor and Commission. Both to those attending here tonight and those who are watching us remotely on their computers, on televisions, we really appreciate your time, and I'm sorry we don't have enough seats for you guys. If you'd like an agenda there to the right of the door on the table, just as you leave, and those who are watching us remotely can access the computer from athensclarkcounty.com. And if any of you in the chamber tonight have cell phones or other devices, would you please turn them off or to silent? There'll be four opportunities tonight for citizen input. Our consent agenda, which are items number one through four, old business items five through eight, and item, excuse me, five through eight, and then we'll have one additional that's been added, which will be under suspension, real item number 13, and I'll let you know when it's time to comment on those items. And then we have one recommendation from the planning commission, and there'll be an opportunity for our input on that, and that's a text amendment. And then one final opportunity at the end of the meeting for anybody that wants to speak to us about anything that was not on tonight's agenda. The rules of the commission allow citizens three minutes to comment. There's a timing clock on Ms. Bratton's desk, and there's actually little lights at the podium there. They'll be yellow, it starts out green, they'll be yellow when you have two and a half, when you've got half a minute left. So if you'll try to have your remarks done within that three minutes, I would appreciate it because no one interrupts you. And please refrain from demonstrations, especially with the size crowd we have tonight, because all citizens need to feel comfortable to speak at the podium, and sometimes people are intimidated and not comfortable if there's either applause or booing or anything else. So please, respect everybody. If you brought handouts, if you'll hand them to Mr. Berryman, he'll share them with us and make sure that we get them. And before we start our meeting tonight, I have something that I would like to read, and it's for Mr. Harry Sims. Harry Sims was our mayor pro tem for two years, and he's been replaced by Ms. Wright, who will be mayor pro tem for at least a year, and I assume we'll probably keep her for two. Whereas District Two Commissioner Harry Sims served as mayor pro tem for the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County during the years 2015 and 2016. And whereas Commissioner Sims was extremely helpful in shaping the 2016 and 2017-year fiscal budgets. And whereas Commissioner Sims provided considerable assistance and counsel on a wide variety of important matters as well. And Commissioner Sims provided profound leadership to the Youth Development Task Force. And I'm going to stray from this just a minute, and for those of you who don't know, that is a tremendous undertaking that I think is going to reap a lot of rewards for our community. And Harry, I specifically appreciate that. Commissioner Sims made sacrifices in representing Athens-Clark County, not only in time but in travel to foreign lands and eating strange, moving food while abroad. And whereas we will think fondly of Commissioner Sims when we sit down for our next meal as he went above and beyond in his duties as mayor pro tem. And whereas we, Mayor Nancy B. Dunson and the Commissioners of the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County, do hereby acknowledge the patience and generosity of and express our sincere appreciation to Commissioner Sims' wife, Evelyn Sims, for sharing Commissioner Sims with our community to perform these additional duties. And whereas Commissioner Sims has represented the mayor and commission with dignity while providing support and counsel to Mayor Nancy B. Dunson and the commission. Now therefore, we, Nancy B. Dunson and the Commissioners of the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County, do hereby proclaim and affirm that District Two Commissioner Harry Sims be recognized for distinguished service to the citizens of Athens-Clark County, and said recognition express the heartfelt appreciation of Athens-Clark County for his dedication to such important responsibility and for his many years of service performed for this community. And for those who you don't know, I believe this is your 30th year in office.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth year in elected office. So thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you.
I wish we could have had that for you on the first night of the year, but it just wasn't possible. So now we'll go to our agenda, and the first business is, which call the role, Ms. Bratton, please.
Dickerson.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Neesmith.
Present.
Vale.
Here.
Harrod.
Present.
Gerst.
Here.
And Hamby.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes of Tuesday, January 3rd, Tuesday, January 10th, and Tuesday, January 17th of 2017?
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any written communications, Ms. Bratton? Okay. I mentioned to you early in the meeting that there would be four opportunities for citizen input, and the first one will be for the items that are on the consent agenda, which are items one through four. So if any of you would like to comment on one of those items, this would be the time to come to the podium and give us your name, address, and which item you're speaking to, and remember the three-minute rule.
My name is Lisa Milot, and I live at 237 Hiawassee Avenue, and I'm commenting on the first agenda item. While I'm here as a private citizen, I am a law professor, and I research in the area of animal control ordinances and the relationship to the communities they're part of, and so my remarks are framed by that research. I'm concerned because the proposed changes do little to reduce the risk presented by aggressive dogs. Under the state approach, dogs classified as vicious and dangerous dogs that are usually kept outside have some of the opportunity, but none of the propensity, to attack reduced under the statute. Dangerous dogs that are usually kept indoors, as most in-town dogs are, have no real restrictions despite the attacks that led to the classification. These dogs are as likely to injure people after classification as before unless their aggression is dealt with. In the interest of public safety, we should require that all classified dogs be neutered. Neutering greatly reduces the likelihood that they will attack again. Unneutered dogs are three and a half times as likely to bite badly enough to require medical attention as neutered dogs. In fact, the only factor making a dog more likely to do an unprovoked attack is training as a guard or attack dog. Because of this, the American Veterinary Medical Association recommends neutering aggressive dogs to reduce the risk they pose to their communities. Requiring that these dogs be neutered is legal. State law authorizes it, and requiring that classified dogs be neutered is narrowly tailored and rationally related to the very important governmental function of promoting public safety. Thus, adopting this change would be consistent with due process requisites. There's no reason not to require it. Dogs that attack unprovoked are not good breeding stock, and their owners clearly have difficulty preventing injury to others from the classified dogs. Moreover, all classified dogs should be microchipped. Currently, only vicious dogs need to be microchipped under the statute. While our ordinances allow animal control to microchip potentially dangerous dogs, in practice, they don't do so, and there's no authorization to microchip dangerous dogs. Thus, there's no way to identify dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs when they're away from their owner. This allows for the very real possibility that a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog could get loose, get picked up by animal control, and be adopted out to a family who has no knowledge of the classification. Requiring microchipping would ensure that the classification record stayed with the dog. Finally, and relatedly, dogs that are impounded repeatedly by animal control are an ongoing public safety risk, a nuisance, and contribute to high taxpayer costs. We should require neutering of dogs on the third impound unless the owner has a current breeding license. Eighty percent of the strays impounded at our animal shelter are not neutered. They present a high bite risk while they're loose, and they contribute to pet overpopulation. Neutering them reduces or eliminates these risks. Stray dogs are a nuisance and a traffic hazard and in violation of our existing ordinances. Neutering them would reduce their urge to stray. Implementing the requirement on the third impound provides an owner with ample notice of the problem and a chance to fix it. This proposal forwards both your public safety goals and the state's goal of reducing pet overpopulation, and as with the neutering of classified dogs, it passes state and constitutional muster.
Thank you. Lisa, tell me your last name. I'm sorry.
Milot, M-I-L-O-T.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, sing. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Deborah Stanley. I live at 285 Buena Vista Avenue. I also would like to speak in support of requiring stronger ordinances as far as dangerous dogs are concerned, and requiring them specifically to be neutered, and also dogs that have escaped multiple times and ended up in animal control. I only discovered very recently, when someone in our neighborhood was attacked, that in fact, this wasn't already required, and I was quite surprised. As Lisa has already said, this does make, neutering them would make the dogs a lot less likely to attack both humans and other animals, and less likely to get out in the first place. You know, if they're all hormonal, they're more likely to be out roaming. And also, it's better for the dogs, because when they get out, they can get run over. So it's not good for them either. As I'm sure you know, we have a major pet homelessness issue in this state, and the state has just committed a large sum of money to try and deal with this with spaying and neutering, so it would seem logical for us to do what we can to help. So that's also an important issue. The only reason not to do it would be if the owner wanted to breed them, but that's not a good thing either. We've already got way too many dogs. But if they want to, they can register as a breeder. For me, this is not just a theoretical discussion. I know either directly or at one remove three people who've been killed by dogs. A couple who, in Lexington a few years ago, I'm sure you heard about, killed by a pack of dogs, I worked with her, and somebody I work with now, whose six-year-old nephew was killed in Atlanta a couple of weeks ago, you probably saw it in the news. In those cases, the dogs were not altered. The first was a pack of stray dogs that somebody was feeding, but the second was some guy's dogs that he had in his backyard that people said he was breeding. So I think that this really is a no-brainer. There's no downside to it, and I really think that we need to, you know, take control on this issue. Since I have a little bit of time left, I'd also like to speak about another issue relating to dog breeding. There's a bill called HB 144, which is currently, has just come out of committee in Atlanta, to make it illegal for local governments to create an ordinance banning the sale of cats and dogs. This is backed by Petland. So the idea is they don't want to be banned from doing that. Of course, that means that there are yet more animals that don't get homes because people buying animals, and they get dogs from puppy mills, which are really, really evil. If you don't know about puppy mills, just Google it, and you'll find out.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. You're, oh, I'm sorry. It's not a, it's not a.
So please, can you, can you contact our state representatives and state senators and ask them to vote against this, because it's taking away your power to do what is right for our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. I'm sorry I interrupted you. Barry.
Hi, my name's Barry Erwin. I'm a resident of Clark County. I get my mail at P.O. Box 1861. I do want to speak to the ordinance. Primarily, I do want to talk, though, about House Bill 144. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy with me, but the offending language that Deborah spoke of is at line 244 of the bill. It's brand-new language. It does eliminate the local government's ability to restrict in any way the sale of animals. But the bill itself, and I'm sorry, this is brought up at the very last minute, the bill will probably be on the rules list for voting on tomorrow. It was voted out of committee on February 1st. But the bill itself mentions a lot of other language that's already in the law, which allows a citizen to create 30 new pets a year, 30 new animals a year, without being classified as a breeder. To me, that seems extremely high. If someone has two litters of pets, in my opinion, they should register as a breeder and have veterinary care issued and whatnot done for the second and subsequent litters. But this really needs to be looked at by the commission. I know that the theory behind some people in Atlanta was to ask the county commissioners and city councils to contact their lobbyists, GMA and the Georgia Association of County Commissioners, and I'd ask you to do that. But the time is really short, because this could very well appear on the 14th legislative day agenda for tomorrow from the Rules Committee. I don't know. It's on the House main calendar, it's being approved out of committee. But I do suggest that the entire animal control and animal dealing with ordinance be looked at and rewritten. There's a number of things. We ought to be classifying owners as guardians and requiring additional things to do, and probably some things regarding the animal control facility ought to be looked at as well. It should be classified as an animal protection facility and not a place where animals are killed on a regular basis. But certainly with regard to dangerous dogs and dogs that attack people, my understanding, there's a particular dog that lives on Linden Avenue that has caused some of the stir and bitten several people. And I know that, once it's reported the third time out, they can, you know, have it killed and have its head sent to Atlanta, but by the time it gets to the third bite, sometimes it's a little bit too late. And so I would suggest that, I'd like to see the commission, you know, pass a resolution to ask at least the representatives to vote against House Bill 144 and seek lobbyist efforts in, you know, defeating that, because generally speaking, the lobbyists have more say with the legislators than do the non-lobsters. So be available for any questions, and thanks so much.
Thank you, Barry.
Hi, I'm sorry, I really don't have anything prepared, and I wasn't planning to speak. My name is Irene Budoff. It's B-U-D-O-F-F. I live at 667 Cobb Street. I've had animals ranging anywhere from 150-pound St. Bernard down to, what I now have is a 35-pound, what they consider a pocket pity, which is generally classified as a pit bull mix. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with breed-specific legislation, which has passed in a number of communities, which is basically, a breed is considered dangerous, which would classify my little dog as a dangerous breed. I would believe that spay-neuter would prevent incidents like that, where communities have to get to the point where they legislate things like that, because it prevents the overbreeding and the point to where these breeds become dangerous, because unspayed and unneutered dogs become pack animals, become, as Deborah said, hormonal, become to where they become dangerous. Also, and I know I'm rambling, I'm sorry, become unhealthy. An unspayed, unneutered dog has health issues. This has been proven by the veterinary community. Later in life, they are sicker dogs. They have more issues later in life. They have shorter lives, as it doesn't matter how well they're cared for. Unless somebody wants to breed purebred dogs, there's no reason not to spay and neuter. So for the sake of the breeds, and for the sake of your own family pet, whether it's a purebred, whether it's a mutt, spay and neuter them. It just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Budoff.
Hi, my name is Jed Kaler, and I live at 160 Sweetbrier Court in Winterville. I would also like to talk to the point of the animal control ordinance. Like all these lovely people have said, spaying and neutering does decrease aggression in dogs. Even on the Department of Ag's website, and the Georgia Veterinary Medical Association say, and I quote, "Spay and neuter is a healthy choice." The Department of Ag, like she said, gave out $600,000 last year to do with pet overpopulation. Since 2013, it's been 925,000 total, so clearly they know we've got a problem. I also work in private rescue as well in the area, and I see what pet overpopulation does to this community, and it's honestly grotesque and disgusting that we can't have some sort of regulation if there are rules in place that you cannot breed a dog or have a certain set number of puppies a year. My job exists because there's too many animals. And to, A, allow the Bill 144 to pass and basically take anybody's right away to say, "No, you can't puppy mill that $3,000 dog," that they legally don't have to alter once they adopt, which I must say, all nonprofits and rescues are legally required to spay and neuter their pets before they're adopted. Sorry, I hate public speaking. If, and plus, as a taxpayer, I called on a Saturday because there was a dog roaming around the gas station in Winterville, and lo and behold, to my surprise, after working with these lovely people for two years now, they don't work on Saturdays. So if your child is in danger on a Saturday, you're screwed, and sorry for my language. I think it's irresponsible for pet owners to allow their animals to go unaltered, especially when they're not breeding them for any kind of working purpose. I think that should be the only reason you should be able to breed a dog, because a teacup poodle is cute, but there's really no point for it to proliferate and become a puppy mill situation. I think all of these things that they have all presented sound good. I see the benefits on a daily basis from spay-neuter, and working in private vet practice for 10 years and only rescue for two, I can say every vet that I've ever worked for, if some client walked in with an aggressive dog, their first suggestion is to fix it. And I, anybody believes that in the animal world. So thank you for your time, and I hope you think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Hi, my name is Nadine Cohen. I live at 585 Brookstone Drive, and I also have no prepared comments, but I just want to voice my support for spay-neuter, because there is no downside to spay-neuter. It's kind of a old wives' tale that it will make a dog lazy, or hard to housebreak, or fat, and none of that is true. The only downside is that it can't breed, and that's definitely an upside in a community like ours with such a serious pet overpopulation problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sarah Davis. I live at 101 Jasmine, excuse me, Jasmine Trail in Athens. I'm also speaking to the first issue. I won't repeat what's already been said, although I do agree with everything that people have iterated. Dogs classified as dangerous and potentially dangerous should be altered and microchipped in the interest of public safety, for reasons others have listed, but namely, the one that really sticks out to me is that unaltered dogs are three and a half times more likely to cause an injury that requires medical attention. And this is something that we have seen in our communities and in my work with rescue here in Athens. We see it far too often with devastating effects. Furthermore, dogs that have been impounded three times should be also altered. It provides, it poses a safety risk as well for reasons listed that, you know, they are more, they are more likely to attack, and not to mention that they are more, excuse me, more likely to breed within the community, which creates, you know, a ton of unneeded animals in the community, which is completely against our spay-and-neuter efforts. So there's, like everybody said, there's no downside to these recommendations because they are within the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else? Don't want to leave anybody out? Okay, we'll come behind the rail now. Would any commissioner like to remove an item?
I'll remove number four, just for a brief comment.
Okay. Mr. Neesmith?
Yes, I'd like to remove item one. That's the animal control, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion for adoption of the two that are left?
May I move adoption of items numbers two and three of the consent agenda?
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we now move to item number one for discussion. Do you want to start, Mr. Neesmith?
Yes, ma'am. You know, I hate to admit it, but when we saw this, and the first time we saw it was at our agenda-setting meeting a couple of weeks ago, the commission itself really had, as far as I know, nothing to do with the drafting of this ordinance, and that was our first view of it. And frankly, I read it, but I didn't have a lot of insight. I think the citizens tonight have brought us some important insights, and it makes me wonder, Madam Mayor, if we shouldn't send this to a committee, and I'm chair of the LRC, so I really may regret doing this, but if it happens, shouldn't send this to committee for a little more thought, especially regarding the spaying and neutering.
Well, I tend to agree with you. How about the rest of the commissioners? Y'all comfortable with that?
So can I make a motion to that effect, Madam Mayor?
Please.
That we send this back to the LRC?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion, second, to send the adopt ordinance back to the LRC committee. Mr. Harrod?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I intend to support this, because I do think it needs to have another, or a greater look from the commission. But I believe that the reason this is in front of us is because of a change in the state designation. Is that correct?
That it was to bring us in compliance.
So that's, so that's why it's in front of us. But I agree with Commissioner Neesmith, I think that since this is in front of us, we should probably look more broadly at some of these issues.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Attorney, will a delay in adopting this ordinance have any effect on us because of the change in the state law?
Two parts to that, two answers to that question. One is that a part of this ordinance is to allow staff at the animal control center during off hours, off hours, when there's no animal control officer there, to serve citations on people who are picking up animals. That is something that we feel from an enforcement point of view is something we like to see done. Also, I don't see any harm in conforming this ordinance, at least temporarily, to the state law, so that we won't run into problems in court with somebody challenging that fact. And then the LRC could, could look at any amendments that happen. But there is a little bit of urgency to at least doing this part. It doesn't mean you can't follow on behind this and make some other changes.
Ms. Neesmith, can I offer a suggestion, that we withdraw this and adopt the item one, and then I'll refer to the committee, the other issues?
That would be excellent, Madam Mayor. Since this is not a substantial change to our law, it's just a change in verbiage and definitions. If you could do that, I would, I think that would be very wise.
Okay, we'll entertain a.
So I withdraw, I withdraw my emotion, my emotion.
Emotion. Was there a second?
I second it. I'm happy you withdraw my second.
Okay.
A second, not a motion?
So the plan, Madam Mayor, is for us, is to, for us to adopt this ordinance, and then you'll send something to the LRC.
I just made myself a note about that.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Entertaining motion for adoption?
Yes, ma'am, so moved.
Second?
Motion, second.
I need to read the ordinance.
Thank you.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to animal control and for other purposes.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll go to item four, and Ms. Link, that was yours.
Yeah, I just had a brief comment. I happened to be crossing, under the new RRFBs on Baxter Street a couple of weeks back, and there were two other pedestrians at the same time crossing with me, and we pushed the button, and we stood there because we didn't, couldn't see the overhead flashers. So I'm wondering if these overhead beacons that we're installing, if there's any means of installing some kind of flasher that's visible to the pedestrians that are crossing? You know, we were just standing there, not realizing that these flashers were even indicating to traffic to stop.
Do you have any insight?
When you cross the street, you should be able to see the top of the other one.
Yeah, well, maybe it was just a problem on Baxter Street where they're completely overhead.
We can take a look at that.
But yeah, just alert staff and ask them to make sure that there, that there's pedestrian visibility. And with that, I'm happy to go ahead and adopt this. Or, yes. I'll second that motion.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys. We'll move on now to the second time of citizen input, and this is for items five through eight and item number 13. But I wanted to give you all a little bit of a heads-up on item number 13, which is the temporary moratorium. I'm sorry. You can't, you can't speak to that. There's another item in here I have, I have to let you know about before we get to it. That's item number, is it?
No, that was the question.
Ma'am? Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We will take input on five through eight, and item nine will be dealt with later. And you can comment on item number nine. It's going to be acted on under suspension of rules, but it does not include a moratorium. So if you're here to speak to a moratorium in the West Broad Street, that will have to wait until the end of the meeting, because it's not on the agenda. So now take public input, now that I've thoroughly confused you, and myself.
I'm Karen Porter, 285 Three Oaks Drive, Athens, 30607, and I'm a member of the UConn River Greenway Commission and the Planning and Natural Resources Committee. It was a pleasure for that committee to work with Leisure Services to draft the 2016 Greenway Network Plan that's before you tonight. The UConn River Greenway Commission is a citizens' commission chartered by Athens-Clark County Government to develop the plan for a river-oriented greenway system and guidelines for its implementation. It's advisory in nature and makes recommendations directly to the mayor and commission. The 2016 GNP is a product of over 1,000 hours of volunteer service by members of the Greenway Commission. The drafting process include reviewing previous plans and maps, field trips to The drafting process include reviewing previous plans and maps, field trips to locations, interview with staffs and citizens involved in the original plan, response to public comment, and endless hours of mapping, editing, and rewriting. Carl Vincent Institute of Government provided pro bono services equivalent to $20,000 of a consulting contract. The results of planning may clear the purpose of the greenway was to provide a high-quality environment through resource protection, education, recreation, health and well-being, and transportation. This guided the goals and actions of the planning committee. There are, on this current form that's in your folder, 14 high-priority projects that are identified as being important to the greenway. Five are in tier one and are recommended by ORGC and our committee as first for funding and completion. Their purpose is to create a high-quality greenway, its length and connectivity by increasing connections for existing greenway, filling gaps, improving and extending existing trails and connecting them with surrounding neighborhoods, schools, and parks, and taking advantage of opportunities to combine with local and state projects, also adapting based on feasibility and change. The 2016 GNP has been built into its reviews every two, five, and 10 years. It's been approved unanimously by the Oconee River Greenway Commission, and the commission recommends that the mayor and commission approve the plan as submitted.
Thank you, Dr. Porter.
I'm Alec Patterson. I live at 258 Springdale Street, and I'm also here representing the Oconee Rivers Greenway Commission, and I have a specific item that I want to address with you, and that is the Greenway Network Plan is up for a vote tonight, and we are aware that there's a commissioner-defined option which would change some of the priorities in that plan, which we unanimously adopted. And I just want to address those priorities and give you a good understanding of why we set the priorities the way we did. The first issue that I want to discuss with regard to that is the Riverside Trail along Martin Luther King Parkway and the Riverside Trail along North Oconee River Park. If the CDO were adopted, it would demote the development of those from a tier-one priority to a tier-three priority, and I want you to understand why we think they should have the highest priority. I think that it's important to note that the Oconee Rivers Greenway has always been directed to be a river-oriented greenway, and that is the direction under which the Greenway Commission has been working. The path along Willow Street on the west side of the North Oconee River was developed because of a blockage of a landowner along the east side of the river, and that's why we put the greenway along Willow Street. If you've experienced the greenway along Rivers, along Willow Street, you know it really can hardly be called a river-oriented greenway. It's way up on the bluff above the river, and the river is almost not visible from Willow Street during most parts of the year because of the vegetation and the bluffs. The county now believes that we have the opportunity to put the river, the greenway, along the east side of the river because of discussions with the landowner who originally blocked that. We recommended that as a high-priority project. Let me give you a little better understanding of why we feel that is a high-priority project. The development of a park along the greenway, all the way from the College Avenue Bridge to Dudley Park, would be an opportunity for Athens to finally take advantage of its downtown river and develop a downtown linear park along that side of the river, all the way between College Avenue and Dudley Park. You only have to--
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you.
Okay, let me just, just finish up.
Quick thought.
You only have to look at cities like Greenville, Columbus, Chattanooga, to see what an advantage those cities have gained from having a river-oriented downtown park, and we, as a result of that, we think this development should be a first priority project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, respected commissioners, my name is Peter Norris. I reside at 460 Sunset Drive. I rise in support of agenda item number five. The allocation of capital costs associated with water and wastewater systems to customers is a difficult topic, in part because familiar economic theories do not directly apply to these systems. A water distribution system is a natural monopoly delivering an inelastic good. There is no substitute for water. While economies of scale exist for the treatment of water and wastewater, costs of distribution and collection systems increase as more users are serviced. Because of this, it is important that utilities periodically reevaluate the reimbursement of capital costs to ensure its long-term financial viability. I believe the proposed amendments to our ordinances will assist our government agencies in maintaining their financial security. They'll also provide financial predictability for developers and new industrial users. This predictability will in turn support the county's economic growth. I request that you support the update on water and sewer connection fee schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Norris.
My name is Cassidy Lord. I live at 117 and a half Westview Drive here in Athens. I'm here on behalf of the Upper Oconee Watershed Network. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Public Utility Department's risk-based water supply assessment for drought resilience. We agree with their assessment of the risks to our local water supply, and we believe that advanced water meters, increased efficiency of cooling towers, and water distribution system audits are common sense actions. We would also like to thank the Athens Clark County Water Conservation Office for proposing such an innovative and groundbreaking project as a non-potable water reuse system to address our continued need to reduce the county's water consumption. Non-potable water reuse is a proven technology with systems in Fulton, Cherokee, and Forsyth Counties, as well as cities like Las Vegas and San Diego. The county's risk-based assessment shows that non-potable water storage of 20 million gallons per day would reduce the probability of needing to implement severe drought-related water demand restrictions to almost 0 percent. We at UON believe this is an unparalleled opportunity not to be missed. We support the Public Utilities Recommendation to Create a Non-Potable Water Reuse System, and we encourage the commission to approve the recommendation of the Risk-Based Water Supply Assessment to plan a water recycling program in Athens Clark County. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lord, and thank you for that clear assessment of what the ordinance is. I think it helps the rest of the people here and maybe in the television audience.
Madam Mayor, to be clear, may I speak on item 13?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Be careful what you wish for. Pardon me?
Excuse me. Yeah, item 13 is under new business.
Well, okay, it says five and eight and 13.
Excuse me, just a minute. Bill, will you help me with this, because I thought I had checked on this, and this was the time for them to comment, even though we haven't suspended the rules since it's been published? Can't vote on it.
We can't have comment. Yes, you can have comment.
We can't, we can't have comment. Thanks, Harry. It's easy to get confused. That's why I was so tight at the beginning of the meeting.
Harry's trying to cut me off.
Yeah. Well, we want to see you so dressed up longer.
No, thank you.
You clean up nice.
Be careful what you wish for. This proposed moratorium on downtown housing and bars is the most absurd thing I've heard in a long time. For years, all that was talked about was, let's get more people to live in the downtown area, and how it'd be great for downtown Athens. Well, now you have it, and you don't know how to deal with it. I think what you're disappointed in is the fact that it's students and not professionals slash retirees that are living downtown. You cannot pick and choose who you want to live where, and that's what the free market decides. As far as moratorium with bars is concerned, you've got to be kidding me. You take a study done by someone who probably doesn't even live here or own a business here and want to temporarily ban the opening of one type of business. It's no secret that the bars are the redheaded stepchild to Athens Clark County, but boy howdy, the county loves the tax money and the number of jobs that we provide, but nobody wants to talk about that. It would be safe to say there have been more regulations passed down by Athens Clark County towards the bar industry than all other industries combined. You have limited our hours, you have imposed a 3% liquor tax on us, you tried to require background checks on bouncers, which was struck down, you passed a smoking ban that is stronger than the one required by the state, and most recently, you passed a discrimination ordinance that only applies to bars, leaving out restaurants that also serve alcohol. Now you want to temporarily limit the ability to open a bar in downtown Athens based on a study which states there are safety issues and overcrowding issues. When and why was this study done? Was it done so you could shift the blame for wanting to limit bars? What nights of the week did this person or persons walk around downtown Athens? Was it only on weekends? Was it on a home game weekend? I was downtown last night, and it was a ghost town, but I guess they don't pay attention to nights like that. Did they check the restaurants, too? I've seen many restaurants overcrowded through the years, but I guess it's okay since they serve food. Where do you expect 90,000 people to go after a home game? You should be glad that Athens has places for them to go and spend their money. Many towns would kill to have what we have here in Athens. Want to see overcrowding, go to a Kroger when there's a prediction for snow. Isn't that a safety hazard as well? The fire marshal conducts yearly safety inspections on all the bars and restaurants. If you are not in compliance, you have a certain number of days to get in compliance. Otherwise, you run the risk of being shut down. Want to know another safety hazard? Those metal covers on the sidewalks all over downtown. When they are wet, be prepared to watch people slip and fall. Was that in the safety study? I bet not. There's something going to be done about those. Honestly, the thing that makes me most sick to my stomach is that Athens Clark County and the ADDA cut a check to Creature Comforts for $500,000 to expand their brewery operations, but all you want to do is make it more difficult for the people that actually sell their product. Think long and hard about that one. I cannot speak for all the bar owners in town, but I'm pretty sure they're all tired of this, and basically, it all reinforces the perception that Athens Clark County is business unfriendly. I hold in my hand the signed return receipt slip from a package I sent to the State Attorney General's office. This package contained a letter and documentation proving that Athens Clark County has been in violation of Section 3-4-50 of the Code of the State of Georgia by systematically overcharging for liquor licenses. We have to abide by the laws. Athens Clark County has to also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. And actually, for clarity, I'm going to read some statements about what this moratorium actually is because it's, it's legalese, and the study that you're referring to is, has not been done yet, so I'm going, I'm just going to read some points here.
I still have one of these papers.
I know, and that's, and that's all you have, and that's why I think it would be beneficial to everybody for me to do this. The Unified Government has recently entered into a contract with Rosler International to assess the health and safety environment in downtown Athens. Within the past few years, a number of people, the number of people living in downtown Athens has increased significantly, and the evening hospitality and entertainment activity has increased along with it. Staff has noted an increase in crowds on the streets and sidewalks and within alcoholic beverage establishments, particularly those establishments that are not restaurants. Crowd management in areas of downtown with high concentrations of high occupancy bars has become more challenging. This increased activity also has, has had impacts on solid waste collection and management, fire safety, and police services. The consultant will assess the existing state of downtown and make recommendations aimed toward increasing the safety to residents and visitors. The purpose of the proposed moratorium is to maintain the status quo, to allow Rosler to complete the study, and to allow mayor and commission to respond to the, to the recommendations, or any recommendations, that come about in the study, and to make those changes in the ordinances that the mayor and commission believe are necessary to preserve and enhance public safety. The moratorium will apply for one year as follows. No applications will be accepted on permits issued for special use approval, permitted use approval, or building permits for multifamily residential uses in the commercial downtown district. And I'll note for you that units of up to three are not considered multifamily. No, no new uses which could have, have an assembly occupancy of more than 49 persons under the fire codes and which would have an on-premises consumption license and not be a restaurant will be permitted. So, these are just the very large new bars. We're not putting restrictions on the, under 49, which only require one entrance, unless they're trying to combine. Also, no changes in use which would have an assembly occupancy, and this is what I was referring to, this is a little bit legally sounding, but maybe it's easier. Also, no changes in use which would have an, an assembly occupancy of more than 49 persons under the fire codes and which would have an on-premises consumption alcohol license and not be a restaurant will be prohibited. So, I think maybe that puts it in a little bit more understandable language.
Well, there's maybe three bars downtown that are under 49, but they have a license. That's a very small, very small percentage. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Now, I'm sorry to make you stand there.
Hi, I'm Andrea Kerr with Environmental Health, 189 Paradise Boulevard, Athens, and I'm going to speak on item number seven, the proposed increase to Clark County Health Department environmental health fees. I just wanted to let you know that we did have an update to the fees in 2011. However, the fees weren't raised then. We had just added some fees for new programs. Tattoo program inspection was new at that point, so it's been since 2008 since we've had any fee increases, and as you know, costs have increased, and being a fun, a fee-based program, we have to cover our costs, and so we would request that you would approve our fee increases for 2017, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, commissioners. I'm here actually to speak on something else, but I wanted to take this opportunity to express some of my concerns about agenda item number 13. My name's Adam Hebert. I live over at 260 Providence Road, Athens, Georgia, 30606. I have a number of concerns about the content of this proposal, but that's not really what I wanted to address today. Today, the concern that I have is that this item was added to the agenda at about 6:00 yesterday. While that is in keeping with the letter of Georgia's Sunshine Laws and the requirements for public notice and public opportunity to comment, it is certainly not in keeping with the spirit of those laws. It is clear that the commission has elected to bring this up at the last moment to avoid the opportunity for people to take a full look at this and to refine their comments and come and speak. Beyond that, there is some concern that the moratorium as drafted, even though it does not identify itself as a zoning ordinance, may in fact be a zoning ordinance under Georgia law, which requires additional notice periods, a notice of 15 to 45 days and signage and the other requirements set out in OCGA 3666-4. The definition of a zoning ordinance found in the preceding statute certainly appears to include this type of use designation. I'm sure that the commission and the mayor are aware that even if a court was to find that it wasn't a zoning ordinance, just the process of getting to that decision is expensive, time-consuming, taxing on the government, and comes at the expense of the public. I would encourage the commission to take the time to fully consider this proposal, to make it available for public comment, and to give the public an opportunity to be heard, rather than trying to sneak this in here at the last moment and avoid the exact kind of public scrutiny that Georgia's Sunshine Laws are written to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hebert.
Good evening. My name's Richie Knight. I live at 131 East Broad Street downtown, also a downtown business owner. I'd like to echo Mr. Hebert's thoughts. I think the notion or the contents of this proposed item isn't really what we should all be worried about. It's the timing and how this was presented to the public is what's very concerning. I think for the first time ever, I'm truly disappointed to be a business owner in downtown Athens, specifically because I'm on that Athens Downtown Development Authority, the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, one of the most active members in this downtown community, had no idea this was even on the table. So, for this to be hidden from so many people, it's pretty alarming to watch our city government continually show us that we're business unfriendly and we're not transparent. negative appearance to our future business owners and future residents. I hope that we'll all keep that in consideration tonight. And what's one more month to make a decision on this and allow us to have due process? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Yes, my name's Michael Smith. I live at 147 First Street, about a quarter of a mile from the East River District, which is part of the commercial downtown development zone. I'm speaking on item number 13. I'm going to stand aside on many of my concerns about the ordinance as a whole. Everybody that lives or works near downtown that are involved in the processes of county government, either as a citizen or as a member of the government, they knew this study was coming down the pike. It's a public health-driven study. The moratorium is basically from on the face of it to stop the binge drinking and the public health concerns and all the related costs that go along with that. That's how I see it, but I do understand and even agree with previous speakers' points about the timeliness of the moratorium vote. But my concern is the East River District. I would ask that the Commission discuss excluding that district. If this is a public health-driven ordinance, I would just like to point out that there's still lots of property owners in the Pottery Town neighborhood that have held on to their properties over a lot of pressure, not only from developers, but also members of their own family not to sell. So it's what is going to happen, at least in the East River District, with the moratorium on student housing is, yep, there's developers there that want to develop it, but what we're going to be doing by including the East River District in a more specific downtown problem is we're taking a bunch of property owners that have been there 20 years, we're taking away their options. The property values are going to depress in that neighborhood, allowing the developers to buy at a lower price by putting this moratorium up. So I would just ask that, and you know, I've heard other people raise questions about expansion past the downtown borders because of the moratorium, but at least for the East River, I think it's very important that we might be costing longtime property owners a lot of money in eliminating their options by including that district tonight.
Thank you, Michael.
Tim Denson, 290 Midway Road. I'm going to speak in support of item 13. I understand some of the concerns that were addressed before me here, and those concerns would speak to me more so if this wasn't a temporary moratorium. I think the fact that it is a temporary moratorium shows that the purpose of this is so that people can, we can review this and actually put in the desperately needed review of our zoning and occupancy laws that we have. I personally think there might be a better way to go about the bar restriction, but the housing development, that definitely needs to be addressed. I think this is the first step to doing that, and I highly encourage you guys to push this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denson.
I don't know if I will be directly addressing 13 or something that's not on the agenda, but from listening to some of the statements, I think it's timely. I'm representing a number of organizations.
Sir, can you give us your name and address?
My name is Marion Stroud.
I know what everybody does.
1185 Bonnet Shoals Road, representing several organizations that have been dissatisfied with a number of things, and instead of all of them coming down, I thought that it might be best to condense what they wanted to cover. But listening about being notified, I think it would be helpful when you have items that's going to concern the community, that it be put in the paper or advertised so that people can know what's going on, so they can prepare for it. There will be others coming from the organizations in reference to what I've handed out. I'm representing the Aloha Civic Organization, the Community Agenda, the NAACP, and 16 other social and civic organizations. And condensed form, this is what they asked me to present. I was instructed to express appreciation to the Commissioners, and a special thanks to Mayor Denson, Harris Sims, and Melissa Link for directly looking after the needs of the minority and low-income citizens of Athens Clark County. We have come to request your attention, followed by timeless solutions to the complex problems that developers created for the minority and low-income community. A, in 2000, the year 2000, developers programmed the government to rezone all of Clark County. When I say programmed, we think that that's where the influence came from to take that up. B, reportedly, they rezoned 85% plus of the minority community to multifamily. As you know, in multifamily, you can go up stories and high and what have you, and there are numbered buildings, if you go to the frat house on Hancock, corner of Reese and Phillips, and what's happening there, you have, and I'm certainly, being an educator for 40 years, for students, but this has to do with something else. People will tell you from the church that on Sundays, they can't get up and down Re Street for all of the cars.
Mr. Stroud, I'm going to use a little bit of leeway because I did interrupt you, but your time's up, so if you can finish up your points.
Resulting in loss of Newtown, Re Street, properties in the county, most of the Hancock corridor. D, multifamily zoning permits demolition of homes that could be remodeled for families instead of multi-story buildings and frat houses for students, gentrification on steroids. Coping your neighboring county, minority and low-income citizens will not be able to afford living in Athens Clark County real soon unless some corrections are brought about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud. And I would ask, folks, as you come up, let us know which items you're speaking to, because at this point, it's things that are actually on the agenda.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Elsner. I get my mail next door to Berry at Box 562. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item Number Eight. I'm a full-time cyclist. I use the Greenway every day. The Sandy Creek Nature Center side is just a little bit this way from where I live. I'd like to speak in support of the Greenway expansion. Community connectivity is a huge issue for people to be able to use their bicycles. There aren't very many of us full-time cyclists, and there really need to be more. You guys are doing a really great job, especially, I'd like to speak to Mr. Sims and Mrs. Link for getting people out to speak up at the microphone, but, you know, because they're really bothered by things. And we also need people to start getting bothered enough to throw their leg over a 20-pound piece of sculpture with tires that are so small, it will make all this bloated infrastructure look completely wasteful. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of information why that is. Even though, you know, we're finding that a lot of our own environmental agencies here in this country are being gagged from giving us real-time information about what's going on with our environment, the fact of the matter is that there are international organizations that are not, such as the Mercado Research Institute on Global Commons and Climate Change. They're based out of Berlin. They network with tens of thousands of other environmental groups around the world, and they tell us that if we do not cut our carbon emissions by October of next year, we will have burned another 750 million-plus pounds of CO2. Our planet will warm above 2 degrees Celsius of where it is now, and life on Earth as we know it will be unknowable for my son, who just turned 17, for all of your children, for all of your grandchildren. Now, it may not seem like riding your bicycle is going to be that big of a deal, but just before the Badlands National Park Twitter feed, for instance, was taken down, they let us know that every single gallon of gasoline that you burn in your car puts 20 pounds of CO2 into the atmosphere. Every gallon each one of us burns in our cars, 20 pounds into the atmosphere. So making personal choices can really make a huge difference. And I'll just keep talking a little bit more about cycling, and if you really do want to reach out to your constituents and give them a little bit of inspiration, you know, hard facts, of course, are terrifying, but there are also a lot of really wonderful reasons to ride your bicycle. You know, the city spent more than $2 million putting those bike lanes in on College Station Road. They're practically empty, except twice a day, every day, every week, year after year, they're packed solid. A lot of people tell me that they're afraid to ride and that they want things like the Greenway, and I tell them, well, you know what inspires me to get out on the road every day? Our civil rights leaders. And it may sound cheesy, but it's African-American History Month. These people put their lives on the line, knowing that they could be shot, attacked by dogs, blown up, facing the most horrible hostilities. They stood right in front of it and put their lives on the line for what is right. And all I have to do is get on my bike. So peace, y'all, and vote yes.
Tell me what you, maybe you're confused on the numbers. What are you speaking to?
I want to speak about the feminization moratorium on the way.
That's not on the agenda, and to speak to that, you'll have to wait till the end of the meeting when we're taking comments on things that aren't on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
My name is David Finkel. I live at 332 Barber Street. A little bit of history here. I came to Athens about two and a half years ago. I happened to be, used to be in the multifamily apartment business, and originally, my thought on the moratorium was, hey, let's do it. It's a very quick fix. Take a timeout and, you know, assess what's going on. Since then, I've changed. I like to say that I'm also disappointed that some stakeholders did not have an opportunity to vet this item before the meeting, but that's the way it goes. I'd like, I think there's other ways to accomplish what we want to accomplish here. But I understand that probably the reason for the moratorium is to cut off student housing. And I went back and I did a little research and back-of-the-envelope calculations, and UGA is slowing its growth, but it's still growing. And 73% of all the UGA residents live off-campus. So even if UGA grows by 1,000 people a year, we're still going to have a demand for 700-some-odd beds. What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see y'all pass an exclusionary zoning law that would make developers, if they want to build any type of market-rate multifamily housing, to follow some of the precepts in that report that we did, the Workforce Housing Study. We have, as far as I can see, we have four things going on that relate to housing type issues. Number one, there's the workforce study. Number two, there's that GEIC something, it's a two-year program. The third one is Envision Athens, and the fourth one's the Comprehensive Plan. I think someone needs to be reading these, assimilating all the information into a plan, but let me close by saying, I think the zoning idea is a bad thing, because you're going to cut off growth, you're going to send a really bad message to develop, really bad message. In the Workforce Housing Study, two of the things that they're highlighting are senior housing and affordable housing. There's plenty of, there's a lot of land downtown, and I just think there's many other different ways to accomplish this goal and to pass exclusionary zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finkel.
Good evening. I'm Ken Dias. I live at 1170 Timsy Road. I'm a lifelong resident, of course, of Athens Clark County. I've been here over the years and watched infill housing totally destroy the African-American I am an attorney, and I get a call daily from developers, because I have a lot of estate work, particularly from the people that live in the African-American community, about what is available tomorrow, what can they buy. At this point, the west side of Athens, Georgia, as I knew it when I grew up here, as a boy, is not there anymore, and the east side of the community that I grew up as a boy is not there anymore. It has to be slowed down of the community that, for poor people in this town and low to market income, cannot compete and buy homes or pay taxes with developers. We're going to totally destroy this town, and this is one of the most popular towns in the southeast for people to come and go. Our student body at University of Georgia is the fifth richest student body in the country, and developer knows that, and they continue to develop our neighborhoods. My son went to Stanford, and when I first think I landed at Stanford a couple of times, I asked my son, was Stanford's community, the Palo Alto Assembly Community, to this. I say, where do the poor people live? And he said that it is so high-income out here, in disregard as to what happened to this community, to they have to even build housing for professors on campus, because they cannot afford to live out beyond campus. And that is similar, is what is happening in Athens. We have three studies that are going on. I think we need a moratorium until we see what these three studies will tell us as to what direction we should go and where the zoning should be put. Right now, all the multi-zoning is in the African-American community. We need to rethink that. It's not fair, and we need to do something about it. Thank you.
I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Dias, but will you all please restrict your comments to things that are on the agenda?
Okay.
And if not, I'll have to interrupt you. I just, I'd hate to do that to you, but...
I'm sorry. I'll put it back.
Do you have any other, any citizens who wish to speak? Just go on forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Bill Ryland, R-Y-L-A-N-D. I don't know the item number, but I'd like to speak to the inner-city development.
Are you talking about the downtown area?
Well, the mini-mansion.
That's not an item that's on the agenda. At the end of the...
I think it is.
Oh, well, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I need to come back?
Yeah.
Oh.
It'll be the public hearing.
I agree.
Yeah. It's getting confusing. I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, we're at Items 5 through 8 and 13. I think you were trying to speak to Item 9. We'll come back to that one. Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail now. Yeah. It'll be the public hearing.
I agree.
Yeah. It's getting confusing. I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. We're at items five through eight and 13. I think you were trying to speak to item nine. We'll come back to that one. Okay. Okay. Seeing none, we'll come behind the rail now. And we will start with item number six. I believe you have an ordinance -- I mean, excuse me, number five. You have an ordinance, Mr. Bearman?
Yes. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to water and sewer connection fees and for other purposes.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Discussion?
May I move adoption of the recommendation coming from our Public Utilities?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion?
I have one comment. I have some concerns about these when we talk about connections for multifamily projects. These fees are based on per unit, not per bedroom. And we did bring this up in the work session. I just hope in the future, staff can take a new look at these fees and come up with a per-bedroom fee rather than a per-unit because there's a big difference between, you know, a project that might have a handful of one and two-bedroom apartments and one that might have a handful of, you know, three and four and five-bedroom apartments. The capacity's a lot different. So just for the future, I mean, I'm happy to see this pass right now, but for the future, I hope that we can assess these projects based on per-bedroom rather than per-unit.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're on to item number six, which is the risk-based water supply assessment for drought resilience. Anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Item number seven, proposed increase in Clark County Health Department Environmental Health Section fees.
I wanted to make a comment.
Well, let's get a motion.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
Yep.
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt them, but I also have a couple of comments.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that question.
Now, I'll come back to Ms. Wright for her comment, because she...
Well, she could go first since she made the motion.
Um, we probably have the same comments. I was a little concerned about the increase in these fees. It seemed pretty stringent in a couple of cases. And I want to thank Andrea for coming down here and explaining to us that it's been a good eight or nine years since these have been increased. And I hope that we can make sure that there's a more regular assessment of them, so you don't get these really fierce increases. And I also want to point out that these fees are regional. It's not just Clark County, but these will be applying to all the surrounding counties. So it's not like our fees are going to be way, way higher than Oconee County, and we're going to be sending businesses to Oconee County. That's, I think that's my...
My understanding is this is cost recovery. This is not beyond what it costs the Health Department to provide the services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My comment, I wanted to thank the manager for following up and giving us the sample of the rate increases in the surrounding counties, which are exactly the same as our chart, just at a glance. And also, with this agenda item, if I'm reading it correctly, the revenue projected from the fee increases in the range of $412,000, and their expenses are $476,000. So they're trying to match it up, and I agree, it is too much too soon from having been so long, and that it could be incremental, but it seems to be happening not just to us, and it's coming down from the state. But yet, we're responsible for improving it, if I understand it correctly. So it is a tough spot.
That's my understanding, too. Yeah. Ms. Hamby?
Sure. I have a quick question for Manager Williams, if he can answer this. So Commissioner Wright just read -- Commissioner Wright just read about the revenues versus the expenses. And in the chart that was sent to us about the fees that were going up, roughly averaging maybe $50, $100, depending on the categories, it said total projected increase is $93,000. So I guess that, is that $93,000 in that $412,000? Is that the way I should read that?
Do you have that chart?
I don't. I don't have connectivity tonight, so I can't get to it.
Oh, okay.
I've got the chart here if somebody wants to look at it.
Oh, you mean in the...
Yeah.
Thought you meant what we sent out.
Blaine, would it be helpful if I had a written copy?
I've got it here.
Okay.
Y'all give me one second.
Should we be concerned that our manager doesn't have connectivity?
That's scary.
I was concerned. So the total projected increase is $93,000, and you're asking if that's part of the $412...
And I guess if I'm reading it correctly, that's what it is. So basically, there's still a shortfall, even with this fee increase of the cost recovery from that standpoint. Am I reading that correctly?
That's my understanding. We do have Andrew here if you want to confirm that.
I see Ms. Andrew nodding ahead. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an additional $400,000 that was being raised. And so, okay, I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just a question. And I know we've dealt with this ourselves. Is there a plan, I guess that maybe this is a question for Andrew, is there a plan for there to be a five- or 10-year fee increment, like a rate schedule of some sort, so that we don't end up -- and we've run into this a lot, too. Every, you know, we wait 10 years to increase the fees, and then it's significant. Is there any sort of plan to look at this over the next two to three years so that we don't end up with such a huge increase?
And if you'll convey that to the Health Department, that'd be great. Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number eight is approval of the 2016 update in the Greenway Network Plan. There is a commission-defined option by Commissioners Gertz, Hamby, and Wright. Whichever of you wants to present that to us.
Please.
Can we get a motion and a second, and then if you'll explain to us what?
Well, I want to proceed with some comments about the item itself, just broadly.
Sure. Go ahead, and then we'll...
Just want to thank the Greenway Commission members who've done just an enormous amount of work over the last two and a half years. Those who were on the commission in 2014 remember that we had some maps brought forward to us that had some disconnects from the existing text, which dated back to 2002 in the Greenway Network Plan. And what we, as a body, asked for is really better integration of the text in the plan with the maps that would accompany that text. And they did a marvelous job. The updated processes are streamlined. It'll mean, as you move from concept to budgeting to approval by the mayor and commission of individual segments, that'll go faster. It's a more readable plan. There's an executive summary that somebody can take a look at that's just a dozen or two pages rather than the 200 of the overall plan. The maps do a really good job defining for the public where prospective trail segments are going to be. And then natural resources throughout the community are well-identified and highlighted. So it really does everything I would hope for in a plan. The commission-defined option makes two very slight modifications, but I do think they are important ones. There's a chart that was referenced of high-priority trails that was included in the plan. And these are 14 trail segments of several other trail segments within the bigger plan that should be happening in, you know, approximately the next 10 or 15 years, if the funding sources that I think we all hope will come to fruition do in fact come to fruition, including the TSPLOST funds that should be coming following a November 2017 referendum. So these 14 trail segments, the commission-defined option just asks to move up two of them. It requests moving up what's termed the Nature Center Loop West from Tier Two to Tier One, and it requests moving up the Ben Burton-to-Beachhaven segment from Tier Three to Tier Two. There was an earlier draft that was floated that had some other modifications, but what's on everybody's agenda in front of them in their pack, it just makes those two. And the reasons really are simply that one of the highlighted priorities in the Greenway Network Plan is to reach more citizens. And so as those citizens can appreciate the great things that the Greenway has to offer, just like existing citizens do who live along MLK, or who live along College Avenue, or like myself on Pulaski Street, the reason I've been able to spend so much time on the Greenway is that it's just a couple of blocks away from my home. And what these two trail segments would do that are moved up slightly in priority would attach themselves to the backyards of hundreds or thousands of families, particularly in the Sycamore Drive area, in the West Broad area, along the Vincent Drive area near the Holland Youth Sports Complex. And they would get these children more rapidly to other community amenities. And so as a lifelong educator, that's a priority for me in the plan, and I hope fellow commissioners recognize that that's the case. So I would like to make a motion for the commission-defined option.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second, and then we'll go with further discussion.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Have a motion and second. Anyone else want to comment or talk about this? Ms. Lane?
Well, I did want to comment because one of our speakers had talked about the Riverside Trails and those two sections. The current commission-defined option has them as a Tier Two. Like I said, there had been an earlier commission-defined option that came out for discussion, and then there were meetings and back and forth, and then this is a result of those. The information that was included on that, again, getting more length in trails to new areas for the community to broaden that experience. And it's on page 61 of the agenda, if anyone wanted to see that. It also includes the approximate length of the trails. And you can see that we've got some length in that first tier, which I think is important to get more support in the community and more distance.
Ms. Lane, can I get to you?
We had a really nice meeting with a handful of Greenway Commission members, Allison and Kelly and I. And we had a good conversation about the prioritization of these trails. And I'll be supporting the commission-defined option primarily because of those connectivity to those neighborhoods that are underserved. They don't have the kind of pedestrian-bike infrastructure, and they are kind of isolated from some of our in-town amenities. And I'm thinking about some of the communities off Vincent Drive and Cathwood and the Holland Sports Complex area, as well as the Sycamore Drive area. But also, that Nature Center Loop Trail, moving that up, I think could be a very important economic developmental tool. You know, there's kind of this balance in the Greenway between this, you know, beautiful natural recreational amenity and a valuable transportation amenity. And, you know, that trail would run parallel to Newton Bridge Road, which there's a lot of development potential out there. And we also have some bike lanes coming to Chase Street, which would connect the Boulevard neighborhood to that trail, you know, and could get thousands and thousands of residents connected to the Greenway who aren't. I mean, most of the folks who live in Boulevard don't use the Greenway very regularly because they have a very hard time getting to it, unless you're going to stick your bike up on your car. You know, you're not going to be able to get there very easily. And so I think that, you know, moving that trail up in priority would make, I think it would be a very, very high-use trail and, you know, could bring some valuable businesses to that Newton Bridge and that Chase Street corridor, possibly offering some job opportunities to some of the folks who live out in Vincent Drive. We have some low-income communities out there, and they are very isolated from job opportunities and commercial opportunities. So I'm really hoping that moving that trail up can kickstart, you know, some real community action and economic development action in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Ms. Dickerson, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah. So I'm all for, obviously, connecting more of our community, getting further out. But I got a couple of questions. Commissioner Gertz indicated there were only two shifts, but I'm looking at the sheet, and it looks like there's five.
So there are two shifts up, and so, of course, that bumps others down.
Okay. So there, yeah, there's two shifts up and several down. And I guess I've got some concerns looking at the dollar amount, too. I mean, the two that shifted, the Tier Ones, the Riverside Trail, MLK Parkway, and the North Oconee River Park, those were both estimated around $4 million apiece. The ones we're moving up, the Nature Center Loop West is estimated at greater than $7 million, and Ben Burton-to-Beachhaven is estimated at $6 million. That's moving up. I guess I'm concerned about that, and I guess I'm also inclined to support it as presented, given that our citizens have put more effort into this than we have. And I'm all, I guess I worry that we come behind this, and we've done this before, and I typically don't support CDOs, you know, that usurp or, in my opinion, I know we make the final decision, but my feeling is we haven't put as much time into this. I'm concerned that the two speakers that did get up tonight were very adamant that they're going with what's been presented. And I did not make the meeting. I think there was some concern about us being at that meeting anyway, and so I did not go. But those are my concerns. I guess my thought is we need to think about the financial, you know, what we're doing here. We're adding $5 million on a higher tier, and we could be doing the less expensive ones and moving out. So again, I appreciate the thought about connecting further out and bringing more connectivity there, but I also am looking at it financially and also from the side that we have citizens who've put a lot of effort into this. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Harrow, then I'll get to you. Mr. Smith?
Actually, Commissioner Dickerson asked a question that I was going to ask about the Commissioner Gertz mentioning two, but there actually being five with asterisks. Asteris -- asterixes?
Asterisks.
Yes, those.
I regret that I have only one asterisk.
So I don't have a question. Thanks.
Mr. Neesmith?
Thank you, ma'am. I can't support the commission-defined option for many of the reasons that Sharon just pointed out. Mr. Patterson did not get to finish his statement, but this is a statement that's coming from the Greenway Commission, who, as they said, put in a thousand hours of this. So let me recap. First of all, the MLK Parkway and Riverside Trail was promoted from three to one, which implemented would significantly slow the development of these two connected trails as part of the Greenway. The connection on Greenway at College Avenue creates a park along the river, and that was the original intent of the Greenway. The other trails on the street are there because we could not finish, we could not acquire the property to do this. This will create a Willow Street river-oriented Greenway, which is an economic development tool. It creates a park downtown, in effect. The Greenway is intended to go along the river, and that's what we should do. Secondly, the Nature Center Loop West and Nature Center Loop East, Greenway Commission believes that these should be developed at the same time to create a five-mile loop for runners and walkers, which is a part of the Greenway Plan. Greenway Trail's purpose is to provide recreation. During the discussions with the communities, bikers and walkers expressed some concern about the natural surface trail to replace Cook's Trail, and this Nature Center Loop serves that purpose. So we believe that that Nature Center Loop should be developed at the same time, both east and west, to create that loop. Third, the Ben Burton-to-Beachhaven is very troubling to me because I'm very much acquainted with Beach Haven and where it is in development right now. It is not ready for public access, and it won't be for a very long time. So providing connection between Beach Haven and Ben Burton is going to have some unintended effects if we put people into Beach Haven before Beach Haven is ready to have public access. It's very, very fragile and will be until the money is raised to develop it and envision what it's going to be. So that one is particularly troubling. So I'm going to make a substitute motion that we adopt options A and B in the agenda report.
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry that another motion was made before you got to speak. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on, I mean, on the substitute motion?
Well, I'd like to say something because, basically, I was going to make a substitute motion before, but the same motion that Jerry made. I appreciate the efforts of the three commissioners who put the CDO together for the Greenway projects. They're knowledgeable folks. They've got the best interests of the community at heart. But I do think that the number of hours that the Greenway Commission put into this, the level of their commitment and expertise, is something that can't be ignored. So I plan to support the substitute motion.
Okay. Mr. Gertz, and then Ms. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to respond to a couple of the comments that came up to clarify some items. In the initial set of three tiers, there was sort of a cost basis of each that was approximately comparable. And so in the slight rearrangement, the goal was to retain approximately that same cost per tier. If you kind of think of this as being largely funded by TSPLOST, and you would imagine that each TSPLOST would approximately provide $20 million of financing, you can kind of think about this in, say, three, five-year tiers. So if we would begin in 2018, that first five-year segment would be Tier One, the second Tier Two, and the third Tier Three. So you're thinking about the out-years, and you know, and I'm certainly very kind of conscious of what Commissioner Neesmith had to say about the sensitivity of Beach Haven, we'd be talking about, from this point today, somewhere between, say, six and 11 years out. So we're not talking about the day after tomorrow. And that, you know, if we think about what we're looking at in terms of our Greenway history, you know, that would be much more aggressive than we've been pursuing. So... So that's about what the tiers would pan out to. And again, the dollar amounts per tier that are presented in the CDO are approximately the same as in the initial one. So if you would imagine what's happened in the CDO, is the two MLK Trails or the two Riverside Trails have moved down to the top of Tier Two, they together represent $8 million, and what was moved up was the Nature Center West approximately $7 million. So that's a good example of sort of the way the trade-off had worked. And again, I just want to reiterate the point, you know, one of the benefits we can provide the community is access to amenities. Everybody in the community pays taxes. These are sales tax dollars. Everybody shows up at the grocery store. Everybody shows up with their bag at retail outlets. And so the faster we can get close to as many people in the community as possible, the more equitable we are in our decision-making.
Okay. I have Ms. Wright next.
I'm glad Commissioner Gertz touched on the tier bracketing of the totals, because that was where a good bit of the shifts went from the first commission-find option to this point. And it is sort of the philosophy that is coming out of all the hours of work that has been brought to us, and I think that some of the philosophy of having more loops versus more distance is maybe where the main divide is on the spine-tuning of this one, because even though some people don't feel that the Willow Street Trail is all that it should be, it is a trail, and it is that distance that already exists that was 17 years ago that that was made. And so to now start with the other side of the river in that same block, to me, seems like a two-tier priority for this distance and time out that it's going to happen versus getting to a new direction completely, which would be from Sandy Creek Park, which has amenities such as the bathroom, to the Holland Complex, which also has amenities as well as destination and recreational activity there. And then splitting, making a loop from the Nature Center is allowing other trails' segments to come up with connectivity. And so that was, as Commissioner Neesmith pointed out, a split that we made. But again, this one is more about more new distance versus repeating in existing distances or grouping them together for a loop, because of there and back of 2.93 miles in Tier One to is significant for those of us who run or walk, there and back versus a loop.
Okay, Ms. Dickerson, I have you down next.
Well, this is more just a question. I don't see, we've got three different lists, and on page 62 of the PDF, we show College Station to University Heights, but we don't show on either of the other. Is there, was there a reason, like on page 62, which is the part of the, I guess it's part of the CDO?
Commissioner, page 62 is inadvertently included. It was simply an earlier Greenway Network Plan draft from November of 2016.
All right, I'm just trying to make sure we're looking at the same thing, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hamby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I guess I'm looking at it from this standpoint, too, of how we can attract new customers to the Greenway. The discussion we're having, especially along the Willow Street that Commissioner Wright brought up, reminds me of this discussion we have about sidewalks. You know, if there's a sidewalk on one side of the street, why don't we try to extend those sidewalks somewhere else before we start putting on the other side of the street? And I also see the value, though, in having the Greenway specifically along the river there so that people can access it from downtown. And really, in all honesty, that should have happened 17 years ago. And that way, it could have built up more of the momentum for the Greenway. But what I'm hoping this will do, this commission-find option, is build up that momentum and allow new customers to experience the Greenway so that we, as a community, go back to the community, or we as a commission and a Splost Committee go back to the community and ask for more money to help us complete some of these Greenway projects, that more people will realize what's going on and realize the potential that could happen six or 11 years down the road and experience that. I think that's only fair for us to do that for people who, like Commissioner Gertz says, everybody pays into it, and that's something we need to look at. And certainly, it doesn't discount what the Greenway Commission has done and all the work they've done. We couldn't have gotten to this point without the Greenway Commission, and that's also very much appreciated.
Ms. Link.
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Hamby. And I also want to add to that point, the value of social capital. The more new customers you get to the Greenway, the more social capital you invest, the more the word gets out. And, you know, this Greenway Plan talks about alternative fundraising mechanisms, and the more people that have access, the more people who might have connections on how to raise more funds to see the entire network be fulfilled. And I also want to take this opportunity to point out, when we talk about economic development and the kind of domino effects these kind of amenities have on the surrounding area, and we've talked with the Greenway Commission a little bit about this and the importance of getting a Greenway overlay zone. You know, Atlanta has a Beltline overlay zone, and they talk about design guidelines, so you have projects that properly connect to that Greenway that are designed to enhance the Greenway, not overshadow it, so we don't have 40-foot retaining walls overshadowing our Greenway or, you know, five-story parking decks, which we will have in many places. But if we can get ahead of that ball and prevent it in the future. But also, an overlay zone talks about affordability issues, preserving affordable housing or mandating affordable housing in one way or another through an inclusionary zoning policy, which Mr. Finkel talked about earlier. So I hope that we can sooner rather than later get really serious about those kind of policy decisions, so we make sure that the folks who are receiving these amenities in their communities are not driven out of these communities by the rising prices and property tax values.
Thank you. Any other commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to say one more time that I think it's utmost important that the development of the Riverside Trails along MLK Parkway and Oconee Park connect to Dudley Park. Imagine how beautiful that would be and what that would mean to downtown Atlanta, downtown Athens. Got me off on the wrong foot there. Imagine what that would mean to downtown Athens in terms of the economic attraction and people coming downtown, and it would certainly serve the communities around it very, very well. The Willow Street is a sidewalk. This is not a sidewalk plan. It's a Greenway plan. So let's make it a Greenway. We have the sidewalk. Let's make it a Greenway.
Okay, Gas, we have anybody, any other further discussion on this substitute motion, which is for options one, A and B. And A is to approve the updated 2016 Greenway Network Plan text and maps with attachment one. And B is to direct staff to begin the process of amending the Transportation Carter concept map to reflect the high priority projects in the Greenway Network Plan, which is basically the recommended recommendation from staff. So we'll do a roll call vote on that, Ms.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
No.
Bell?
Yes.
Harrod?
No.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gertz?
No.
Link?
No.
Wright?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Five yes, five no.
I just knew y'all were going to do this to me. And I'll have to tell you that I probably am the person in the room that knows the least, that understands the Greenway the least, and I readily admit that. But I also have great hesitancy to have volunteers put hours and hours of work into something and then, in a very short period of time with the CDO, that we discard that work and do something different. And I also believe that the original Greenway to be following the river in downtown is an absolute, I mean, I got convinced tonight with a little bit that I know. So I'm going to vote, make sure I'm doing it right.
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes on that, on the substitute motion.
No, no.
So.
Madam Mayor, I move for suspension of rules to discuss a resolution to start the technical authority.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. And the item that we will be dealing with under suspension of the rules is the resolution that we discussed, that I read the information about earlier, that would put a hold on multifamily development in the CD District downtown for a year, and also the development of new mega bars, basically is the most concise way I can put it. And basically, we're just trying to hold the status quo until we can catch our breath and make sure what's happening, because we have what, in my opinion and opinion of many other people, is an unhealthy situation downtown of crowding, excessive drinking, lots of bodies packed into more room than those bodies can go into. So that's what's on the table. Would you like, would I like to make a motion?
We need to vote on the suspension.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have motion for suspension of rules, second?
Second.
Have motion second on favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, would anybody like to make a motion on the action?
I don't have anything. I don't want to make a motion just yet, but I would like to discuss it for just a minute.
Okay.
And since specifically the mayor and I are on the Athens Downtown Development Authority, and I will have to say that this has come up a lot during the Athens Downtown Development Authority. It's come up so much that, you know, if y'all remember, we Downtown Development Authority was working on an RFP that will soon see some light about the light in front of Indigo Hotel. And the authority and the members of the committee that the mayor put together to help sort of form that RFP at that time specifically said, you know, no more student housing. You know, we will not entertain an idea of using that government property for student housing in that manner. We've got enough student multifamily apartments downtown, and we don't need any more, and we need to make sure that downtown is a diverse downtown. The same discussion about the bars has happened on numerous occasions with the Downtown Development Authority, and we were always perplexed about what could be done. You know, certainly there is that, certainly there is the very important, very important property rights thing and what people can do with their property and how they can rent it and do something about it. But in this case, we are talking about public safety, and it's become a public safety issue. If you go downtown late at night, you will see that, especially as people are crowding into bars, crowding off onto the sidewalks, you know. And I mean, we've seen in other communities where disasters break out and a fire happens and people can't get out of the, can't get out of the buildings, and, you know, if that were to happen in Athens and we didn't do anything when we should have done something, one of us behind the rail would have felt horrible, would feel horrible about it. So this will help us, help us start addressing some of that. I do have a concern, though, however, about, and I don't know what we can do about this, I'm hoping there is something, about converting existing buildings downtown, because, you know, there is certainly some people that have converted buildings downtown that have been, excuse me, let me grab some water here. And just for your identification, this is water, so we're talking about bars, so I just want to make sure. But the situation is, you know, we've had a lot of people do some good work downtown, the Cotton Exchange being one of them, Bottle Works being another one of them. And I wonder if during the year, one of those projects were to come along, how we could accommodate that. But even still, if a business, if a property owner downtown has a building and they're operating their store down below, and they, you know, they want to put an apartment up top, I understand they can do it up to three apartments, but is there any, is there any room for, or perhaps we can't do it with this, is there any modification that we can make that could allow more, more than three but less than some other number? I don't know if that's possible for here or not. That's, I guess, that's a big concern of mine about this particular thing, that wouldn't, that wouldn't impact what, that would not, it would not impact what we're trying to do, and I make it any sense whatsoever. Usually, I'm not, so I don't know if I am or not, but Commissioner Gertz can decipher what I'm trying to say.
Do you want somebody to answer, because I have a comment I'd like to make, because I want to make it really clear that we cannot prohibit student housing. And I think in your zeal to get something done, we could only do that on the one piece of property that we own. We could dictate or decide what goes on that piece of property, but on all other properties downtown, we can't say, no student housing. But what we're trying to do is encourage a healthy mix downtown and see what that is. I don't have a preconceived notion of what this should be, but we are hiring people that have done this other places, that can look at other college towns and see the kinds of things that have worked and make recommendations to us, and then we'll look at those recommendations, you know, in their entirety and see if there are some things there that are going to make downtown safer, because I have nightmares about somebody even dropping a firecracker and causing a panic, and people could not get out of buildings without being trampled. And this is, this is things that we're trying to address, but also the excess of garbage piled on the streets. It's a lot more than just the hold on the bars and the hold on the buildings. It's to look at the entire health and safety of downtown Athens for everybody, and it's a pause, it's not a stop.
Exactly. And I just want to make one final point when I was, when I was talking. I want to make sure and very clear, you know, the ADDA works a lot, I mean, they're very focused on helping downtown, because we recognize that downtown, a good, strong downtown is beneficial to the whole community. And this has been, this has been one of our topics for the past year, two years, about, you know, what we recognize that there is, and we appreciate, though, I mean, let's not make that, let's make that distinction. We appreciate what has happened with downtown, too, because people coming to live downtown has really helped downtown, and it's going to, it's going to help provide some amenities for the downtown area that we're looking for. And, you know, it's a good problem to be talking about when you have people living downtown and what you can do, but we do recognize that we need, we need a diverse downtown. It can't just be all one business or all one, one type of, one type of multifamily residential.
One demographic.
Exactly. So that's where we're at at this point in time. But I'll go, if anybody can help me address that question about, about expanding the more than three to help continue some of the revamping of some of the existing buildings downtown, that would be helpful.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
He's got the answer, Mike.
No, I'm not going to answer his question. I'm going to try to correct some misinformation. We've had a couple of speakers that were concerned about how little notice there was about this being on the agenda, and I have some concerns about that, too. But some of the speakers were saying that the commission did this, and likely people that don't understand how the agenda is set is not set by the commission. It is set by some of the staff, the mayor, a member of the commission, but not the commission itself. So just keep that in mind. Now, we have opportunities to discuss it. That's what we do in our agenda-setting sessions. This particular item was not on our agenda-setting session because it came up very late, but just to say no, the most, the majority of the people sitting behind the rail here don't have direct impact on how the agenda is set and the timing of items. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll take responsibility. Yes, Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mark Bell said early on in the public comment that there are a lot of towns that would kill for what we have, and that's absolutely true. But I think the intent of this item is to ensure that we don't lose some of the good things we have or see some of the good things we have deteriorate. If this was a permanent modification in our standards, if this was anything more than a 12-month moratorium, you know, I'd find myself at a pause. But I think this does give us some breathing room, because really, we've got some challenging circumstances. You know, we've talked about these challenges even as we talk about public infrastructure, and how wide can we make our sidewalks, and how can we manage travel lanes for vehicles as well as sidewalks, as well as parking? You know, the physics of downtown don't allow us to move the buildings on one side of Clayton Street further away from the buildings on the other side. You know, if we could simply open up a crack in the earth and do that tonight, you know, we'd probably do that, and we'd solve ourselves some challenges. Similarly, we don't have alleyways through most of downtown, like a lot of other similar age towns do, Macon, for example. And so we have some challenges with trash collection and with ingress and egress, exits and entry ways, that some other communities just don't have. And so we want to make sure we manage these carefully. We want to be thoughtful about them. I think all of us stand in understanding that, you know, there have been some accumulating things that maybe we have not dealt with incrementally as they've moved along, and so we're going to have to deal with them now, but better to deal with them than to ignore them altogether. And on Mike's point earlier, you know, we recognize that there are some benefits to things that don't offer systemic impact on downtown, and so there's a carve-out here for bars that would be 49-capacity or under, realizing that, you know, 49-person bar wouldn't have a systemic impact on all the blocks of downtown. I wonder if similarly, there's room for a small-scale carve-out for, you know, multifamily of under 20 bedrooms, kind of recognizing that similarly, there are existing, you know, upstairs, second story and third story pl-. upstairs, second-story and third-story places where somebody might create a few apartments. I'd certainly be in favor of some small-scale carve-out. In this item, much like we've already introduced the small-scale alcohol-serving carve-out.
Well, the, when we're talking about apartments, that's not bedrooms. Four housing units does not limit to just four bedrooms. So it maybe is not as restrictive as it sounds. And I'd like to say for everybody here and everybody that's listening, is that moratoriums is almost like a dirty word to me. And Mike Hamby and Kathy Hoard could tell you if they were here how difficult it was to get me to consent to a moratorium to allow time for a historic district to be developed, because I think it's something that you do very judiciously and very carefully. But I'm convinced that the health and safety downtown is so precarious right now that it's worth us doing this pause to take a look at it and try to see what's the best way to do it. And somebody mentioned senior housing. As I said, you can't dictate what kind of housing. If we start opening up the housing, we know that there's demand for student housing, we're going to freeze out everybody else if we don't take a careful look at this. And that's why we're hoping, I'm hoping that we'll do a pause. Mr. Neesmith, and then Ms. Link.
I believe that this moratorium does disallow building permits of multifamily residential uses in the commercial downtown district. So it doesn't matter whether it's one bedroom or 20. And in the spirit of what Commissioner Hamby and Commissioner, what is your name?
Gertz.
Oh, you're Hamby, he's Gertz, said, I would like to just see if you guys would entertain another version of this, which is on the last page, on the back page, where it says, "Paragraph 1, Acceptance of New Applications." So this is what it's a moratorium of. Acceptance of new applications or issuance of permits for special use approval, permitted use approval, or building permits for all multifamily residential uses, more than five units in the commercial downtown, six units in the commercial downtown district. So this would allow building permits for multifamily up to six units. Does that make any sense?
You know, six units could be 24 bedrooms.
Well, we could limit it to some number of bedrooms as opposed to units.
I think it should be bedrooms.
So how about 12 bedrooms?
Can we redo 12 or 3?
Hmm?
It allows for 3.
Well, our planning department does not consider up to three units multifamily for the CD district.
All right.
So you can already do up to three units, which, you know, theoretically, that could be three, four-bedroom units. So it's not totally restrictive, but...
So we could allow up to three units in this, we could allow three units in this moratorium?
So this would allow, if someone is trying to develop apartments upstairs
Right.
Above retail, in most cases, that would make this possible?
If I might, sorry, Commissioner.
Yes, please.
So there is an existing definition of multifamily, which means three or more units attached to a structure. We did discuss three units before, but actually, it's two units or less that's allowed without being considered multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
Not bedrooms, but units. And so
I apologize, I had different.
If you, you know, certainly, I guess, and I defer to Bill, you can pick a number, but it may be somewhat arbitrary.
It will be arbitrary.
We do have an existing threshold that is in our code now.
So you have any suggestions, Spine, just?
Well, if, you know, this would be something you may want to talk with the planning commission and the planning staff about. You might proceed with this and consider alternatives to that threshold, if you want, that you could take up at another meeting.
I think we're here tonight.
Well, I'll get to you, but I will make a statement that a moratorium can be released at any time. It's, you know, we've got it for up to a year. We could pull it off next month if we found that it's not necessary anymore. So, and there's no reason we couldn't amend it, is there, Bill?
No, absolutely.
Yeah. Mr. Ham, Eric?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, that's what I was going to suggest. I mean, I think we have a decent document in front of us, and I think trying to pass this on the floor always leads to all sorts of bad unintended decisions. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and vote on what we have in front of us. And if we want to put some more thought into it and come back in a month or two and slightly amend the moratorium, that's our right.
We're going to have several more comments before, I don't want to cut anybody off. Ms. Link, and then Ms. Dickerson, that lady on the end down there.
I also have some slight problems with the kind of lack of transparency and how this was brought forward. But I will say that this is something that I've been urging for since before I got behind this rail. I mean, I feel like this is something that should have been presented five years ago. You know, it was clear five or so years ago that if we were to allow downtown to be developed as it's zoned, that we would have these problems. You know, you didn't have to be a rocket scientist to predict that these kind of problems would ensue. And so I'm definitely going to be supporting this moratorium. And I want to emphasize that it is a temporary pause. It will allow us to gather our bearings and decide what is the best and most appropriate way for downtown to grow. And I do hope that design guidelines will be part of that discussion. We look at other towns and the way they've allowed themselves to grow with this density, but they have buildings that are smaller footprints, so it makes for more pedestrian area and more public spaces. So they might not have the kinds of problems we have where people who are outside those buildings are spilling into the streets. So, you know, I hope that can be part of that discussion. I know I've brought this up over and over again on the downtown master planning committee. And so I am glad to see this. I'm really glad to see this. You know, and the issue with the bars, I hope that that brings up a discussion of more appropriate alcohol licensing. You know, I don't feel like our alcohol licensing system is very fair and equitable, where you have a, you know, a large-scale mega bar paying the same price for an alcohol license as a small, little cafe that might only seat 10 or 20 people. So, you know, I feel like this just gives us the pause, as well as the impetus, to have some of these difficult and nuanced discussions that I think are long overdue. And I also want to talk about the, my fear, I mean, I do have a fear of some kind of domino effect of this being, you know, if these developers aren't allowed to do their multifamily housing downtown, are they going to start looking to our multifamily in-town neighborhoods like Hancock and like East Athens and the West Broad Corridor particularly, where you do have commercial general zoning, which allows for a pretty intense density? So, you know, I think we need to look at these things as kind of a Rube Goldberg machine, where, you know, you push the dominos and you get the dominos falling, but then it could send the ball rolling down the hill. So I really feel like we need to take a look at the impacts that this will have on our other neighborhoods, because we have seen a proliferation of students moving to our in-town neighborhoods. And, you know, I fear that this is going to have an even greater impact. So I hope that we can get on the ball right away to put down the protections we need to in those other in-town neighborhoods. Ms. Dickerson.
Yeah, I guess I just want to point out again what Commissioner Gertz said. You know, this is temporary. And if at any point during this one year, we need to, as you pointed out, we can withdraw or amend it if needed. But I think the key is, is timing is really important right now. We have a number of studies going on, not just the downtown study, but one of our speakers references, while the comprehensive land use plan is being worked on, the Envision Athens Plan. And all of those plans are actually informing one another as we go along. And so I agree with Commissioner Hamby that we really can't afford for something catastrophic to happen. In the meantime, I certainly, I've been downtown in several of the bars and other locations when it's been pretty crowded, and it can get pretty scary. I could imagine if somebody dropped a firecracker or something, it could create some problems. But that's the issue, is I think it's a safety issue and a concern about the crowding or the grouping of some of these large occupancy buildings and businesses. And it doesn't mean that they're, I mean, we're not stopping them, we're not telling them they can't do it. We're just trying to temporarily put a hold on that so we have time to assess the whole environment, the garbage and whatever else. But I do want to mention that during the Envision Athens process, we had the five meetings last week. And during that process, I was, I had a couple of tables that I manned, and then I also walked around. And I heard a lot of the common themes that I heard were not just from older citizens who don't necessarily go into the bar scene, but also students. Their concern about downtown and that it's becoming sort of a downtown playground for students, and that there isn't really a need for citizens to go downtown unless they're going to be part of that scene. And I think that would be a shame to lose the character that we have established and worked really hard to bring back after, you know, the mall came in and we lost a lot of businesses to the mall. We've created a really eclectic type of environment, and we need to protect that. And so I think taking a little bit of time to assess where we're at is a good move for us. I would like Attorney Barryman to explain the, why it's 49 persons, why the parameter is 49 persons, just in case anybody had some questions about that, because I did.
Yes.
Originally.
The 49-person requirement is based on the fire codes. A building can have, that only has one entrance and exit, can have a maximum of 49 occupancy. So that's just considered the smaller occupancy in downtown for fire safety.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind me saying one more thing.
Let Ms. Bell first, because she has had her hand up.
I finally got a go.
I forgot she was sitting next to me.
Thank you. This is my understanding, when we first knew the decision about preventing sprawl in Athens downtown, that this was why a lot of the high-rise student apartments came. And I've said this to many people over the last couple of years, to watch the change in our traffic and so many of the students that live in downtown walk rather than get their cars out. So we did prevent something. We did do something that changed, that helped. But then, you know, we created another issue, which is what we're all about with this. But the sprawl is where this started from, is what I've understood, back in 2000, 2001, somewhere in there. 2000, thank you. The other part of this, and all of this coming as an item for tonight, and I really have no problem with why we're doing it and how we're doing it right now. But the main thing regarding the bar situation and regarding all the other issues, it's about the word safety. And that's where I hate to make a quick decision about this, to know that it can, and I'm glad to know that we can reverse if we need to in a couple of months, three months, whatever. It doesn't have to go through a full year, but to know that safety is a critical, critical, critical issue. And I'm grateful for us to be addressing that now. But thank you for bringing this as a part of our meeting.
Ms. Hamby.
Sure. I was just going to piggyback on something Commissioner Bell said about, you know, how this came about. And certainly, you know, I wasn't on the commission years ago, when, and I see Mr. Griffin over there, our planning director, about TDRs, those transfer development rights. And it does seem like what has happened downtown with the density there has occurred, has occurred in some sort of natural fashion, as opposed to what was trying to be created with the TDRs and getting people to live downtown and increase the density there. And, you know, in a lot of ways, that's been good, because, you know, we certainly have people living downtown, students living downtown, who would otherwise be living in our neighborhoods. And, you know, while we certainly appreciate the students and what they do for the community and what the University of Georgia does for the community, we do have to, we do have to, we do have, you know, some long-term residents here who also have invested in their neighborhoods and in their homes. And when, in that situation, Commissioner Herrick could probably speak to it better than any of us, especially over in Cedar Creek when that was going on, that created a situation for a lot of the neighbors over there, when the nighttime hours are different, the daytime hours are different, and the noise level can be different as well. So at any rate, I just wanted to mention that, that certainly, certainly the density downtown has had a positive impact, but we also need to recognize that a, what's the right word, Jerry, a more diverse, not diverse, of people living downtown, at least at Curzon.
A greater demographic variety.
There you go.
For the lack of a word. And before we vote, I want to make something very clear that...
I have one more question, Madam Mayor.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I want to make it very clear that neither I nor anybody on the commission have an anti-student bent. But my rationale is mostly to protect those students, as well as all the rest of the citizens that visit and use our downtown. And again, it's a pause for us to look at, is there a better way for us to be using our downtown that's safer and more unsustainable for the whole community? Now, Ms. Smith.
I have a question, if I could ask Attorney Barryman. Bill, why isn't this a zoning or land use matter?
There's case law that says moratoria are not zoning actions under the zoning procedures law, as long as they're for a definite purpose and for a definite time that's reasonable.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys ready to vote? I can't think of anything more that could be said. Did we have a motion on the floor? It's been so long, I'm not sure.
I'll move that we accept.
Okay. Have a motion in a second, and let's do a roll call, Ms. Sprattland.
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
Neesmith?
No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Herrick?
Aye.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Eight yes, two no.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I must excuse myself.
Thank you. Okay. I think there are people wanting to leave. We will have the mic open for public comment here in just a minute.
Remember that you...
You need, y'all need a break?
Well, it says 8:15.
Yes.
It seemed like we should have been through, didn't it, Jared?
Should we take a break now?
Would y'all like it? Does anybody need, can y'all make it without a break?
If I have to get off.
Yeah, okay.
Would somebody, would someone close the doors so that we can get on with the meeting?
And everybody that wants to be a part of the meeting or speak, please come on inside. We'll now go to the public hearing part of our meeting that will be related to the text amendment from planning, which is infill housing. So would anyone like to speak to that item? And again, if it's related to a moratorium attached to the infill housing, it's not appropriate until the end of the meeting. Sorry about that, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor and Council, I'm Bill Ryland. I'm just average Choblo citizen here on 240 Hillcrest Avenue. I've been a nurse here for over three decades, taking care of hundreds of thousands of Athenians. And I mean, taking care of them in critical care. Anyway, I've never had a beef with the local government, but 14 months ago, I was awakened. The land cattyquered behind me on Hill Street was, which, mind you, is .2 acres. It's about 70 feet by 100 feet. There were 40-something pickup trucks, I mean, dump trucks, triple-axle dump trucks lined up to increase, you know, the surface level there. They increased it from knee level when looking out my kitchen window to eye level, and that's the base of the building. I tried to call off the builder several times. I spent four visits down to City Hall, and they basically told me that, you know, I didn't have, there wasn't a law to help me, the planning commission and water runoff. The problem I have is, I mean, it's a terrible eyesore. I mean, it's not a fish out of water, it's a shark out of water, but I don't care about aesthetics. This thing dumps water on me. On my way over here tonight, I had to dig a moat around my house, and I had to channel it over to the street next to me. And tonight, I could barely jump over it to get down here to City Hall. And it's bright orange water. It's earth in the water. And I spent four visits to City Hall without, with a... And I spent four visits to City Hall without, without a single bit of relief. As a matter of fact, they told me, since I was not commercial, industrial, and since I didn't own more than two lots, so I guess that's a developer, that they didn't have anything for me, to get a lawyer. And I talked to a lawyer, and he basically said that he couldn't do a lot for me. So anyway, I'm just disappointed in our local government. So what I have to do is build basically a dam. I have to build a retainer wall all the way around my house and fill it up inside there and take the drainage of this home under my house, under my property. My lot's not walkable tonight, and I have to take that drainage underneath at a cost of $10,000-ish, best I can figure, which is debilitating to a single dad with two kids in college. So I'm really, really disappointed in our local government and the planning commission. The water runoff guys didn't help me at all. And I invite, it's a five-minute drive from here, it's just a few blocks, I invite all of you to spend five minutes in my yard on your way home from this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ryland. You may sit in after the meeting.
Thank you. 240 Hillcrest.
I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Adam Hebert. I live at 260 Providence Road, Athens, 30606. Outside of what I do in my individual capacity, I also serve as the president of the Athens Clark Heritage Foundation. And I'm here tonight with regard to item number nine, to speak on behalf of the Board of Trustees in support of the proposed infill housing amendments. Over the past year, the foundation's been very involved in educating the public about infill housing amendments and in developing, along with Michael Sogster and Lori Bort, newcomer, a draft of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance that were presented to planning staff last spring for their consideration. We're supportive of the proposed amendments to single-family zoning regulations, but are also keenly aware that these changes do not provide protection to all neighborhoods. In particular, the infill housing ordinance would not apply to the West Hancock National Register District, a very important historic neighborhood right here off of downtown. This is the only in-town neighborhood zoned predominantly multifamily that is not protected by a local historic designation. The West Hancock National Register District is also the only national register district in our community that's not protected by a local designation. The West Hancock National Register District is an incredibly valuable historic resource, is one of the few intact historically African-American neighborhoods in Athens. While there may not be a current definitive threat to the neighborhood, the ongoing West Broad feasibility study is looking at redevelopment options for the Broad Acres Public Housing Complex located adjacent to this historic district. Any such proposal has the potential to generate significant new development in the historic district and could be a serious threat to its historic character. There has also been considerable talk of the redevelopment of the Varsity Property, located adjacent to the historic district again, and such redevelopment could also put pressure on the residents and historic resources of that district. Often, neighborhood and historic preservation advocates are criticized for being reactive and for waiting until it's too late to pursue a course of action to protect local historic resources. In speaking up here and now, it is the foundation and its members' intent to put this vital issue squarely before the mayor and this commission. The time to act is now. And in the coming months, ACHF will be working with stakeholders to actively canvass the community to ascertain its goals and to educate the residents about what options are available to protect the heritage, unique character, and historical integrity of this neighborhood. We, the Board of Trustees of the Athens Clark Heritage Foundation, urge you to take steps now to plan for the future protection of this very significant neighborhood and other vulnerable neighborhoods, historic neighborhoods in our community. Thank you.
I apologize to the people here, because we are speaking to the infill housing text amendment, not to a moratorium, but I'm going to let this sweet lady come speak to anything she wants to. You've been waiting long enough.
I live on 298 North Rock Springs Street. I have lived there for 60 years. I'm here to speak on the demolition moratorium in my neighborhood. We do not support any planners coming to our neighborhood, tearing down our historic buildings, and ruining the facial features of the neighborhood by building humongous buildings there and causing us not to have a clear view to get out of our driveway safe, and also building cookie cutter houses, gas stations, apartments, and other business next to us, creating a traffic problem and causing our taxes to increase. We have great history in our neighborhood, such homes that belong to doctors, dentists, educators, and principals. We also have other historic buildings there. We would like our neighborhood to stay peaceful, safe, and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. And I am going to enforce that we're only talking about the text amendment, which is the infill housing amendment, until the end of the meeting. So anyone that wants to speak to the text amendment, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail then, and we, Brad, you need to give us any kind of a briefing or anything? Yeah, okay, if you'll read the ordinance, Bill.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to infill housing and for other purposes.
Thank you. And Ms. Link, I believe you have a CDO?
Yes, I do. You know, I've been following this infill issue for quite some time. There have been a lot of public meetings about it. And, you know, when this was initially presented, they showed all these examples of inappropriate infill or infill that was troublesome to the community or didn't fit in. And a lot of those examples came from multifamily neighborhoods, where you're seeing these big student duplexes, particularly in East Athens. But multifamily neighborhoods are excluded from this ordinance. So I feel like by passing this ordinance, the target on those neighborhoods grows. And tonight, it grows even more, because we just passed a moratorium on new multifamily development downtown. I totally support this ordinance. It's been a long time in the making. I feel like it does need some tweaking, and that's why I'm proposing this CDO that asks staff to come back to the planning commission in one year to offer some feedback on its impacts and possible adjustments. I feel like the retaining wall details are a little fishy, you know, I feel, you know, I feel like, you know, if you have a retaining wall that's facing inward on the property, you should be able to go up a little bit higher. Right now, the limits are four feet, you know. I don't feel like a retaining wall facing in has a very deleterious effect on the surrounding properties or the streetscape. And I know that there are plenty of small lots that are hard to develop on strange topography that kind of require those retaining walls. I can think of a couple on, there's one that's going up, that's being added on to on the plaza right now. And I know my own little tiny millhouse, the millhouse is on my street, were built into the side of hills, and if we were to add on to our homes, we would have to do some significant retaining walls. But I'm hoping that that discussion can kind of be worked out and we can see the actual impacts. But, you know, my big concern is, is this ordinance going to push development into those multifamily neighborhoods? If you can no longer build your big dream McMansion in Normal Town, are you going to head to Hancock? And Hancock is already being marketed, you know, for being in the Chase Street School District, and it is seeing a lot of changes right now. It's, you know, it's a traditionally African-American neighborhood, traditionally working class, and we're seeing a lot of young working-class and creative-class couples moving in and starting families, and, you know, they're folks who respect the history of the neighborhood. So I hope that this infill housing ordinance can be the impetus for us to pursue the necessary changes and guidelines we need to protect not only the Hancock neighborhood, which is on the National Register Historic, it is a National Register Historic District and has been since 1988. We have a clear map of what the historic neighborhood is. But we can also look at East Athens as well, and really have a detailed conversation about how we want this community to grow and who we need to protect as it grows. So with that, I'd request that we adopt the infill housing ordinance with my CDO stating that it go back to the planning commission in a year.
Now, is that actually what the CDO is? I thought it was to give us a report back in a year.
Adopt the infill housing ordinance as presented with direction to staff to return to the planning commission in one year with a report on feedback on its impacts and possible adjustments to the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second it, but I'd like to say something.
Sure.
I don't think this infill housing ordinance is an impetus to protect West Hancock. I think we have to do that on our own. We need to do it now. And so some of our commissioners have been meeting as a minority, not a quorum, to discuss an approach, which we're working on. But one thing to look at, a simple one, is to look at the zoning on the West Hancock corridor and the zoning right across West Broad. RM1 is the zoning on Hancock, the whole neighborhood, pretty much. And across the street, it's RS5, which is single-family. That was done by George Maxwell when he came on this commission. He was protecting his district. So that gives you a hint about something that can be done immediately, which would allow this ordinance to apply to that and would also prevent the building of multifamily structures by right. So that's, you know, the kind of thing we're going to be looking at very soon. I'll be seeing you later, Brad. Thank you. So I have a second, I have seconded that motion.
A motion and a second. Ms. Herrick, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't necessarily have a problem with the commission-defined option, but I do have a question for our planning director, because planning is one of those departments that we continually load up with work. So is the requirement to report on impacts, is that going to really create much of a headache for you?
No, sir. That's not a problem. And probably something with this type of change, it would be good practice to do anyway.
Okay.
Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad to see this on the agenda. It has been a long time coming. I was just looking on the county website, and it was in 2008 that we received an infill housing report from Brad's department, with a lot of great work in there, and this really addresses sort of a cornerstone of that work, but clearly doesn't address every element of it. And so I do hope that in the months ahead, we can look at some other things that are going to benefit neighborhoods from White Hall to Newtown to East Athens to West Hancock. And those may include appropriate zoning, progressive property tax policy. You know, we might be looking at some features that we don't have, like a conservation district that might work similarly simply to this, but retain some of those cornerstone facades in historic neighborhoods that aren't ready to take the dive and become a locally designated historic district. So I hope those are things that we look at in the time ahead. I can support the commission-defined option. I mean, I think given the modification that we're making in code, it makes sense to take a look in a year.
Ms. Link.
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing. You know, I've been trying very hard to come up with a way to protect that Hancock neighborhood for, ever since I stepped behind this rail. And I want to thank Commissioner Gertz and Commissioner Neesmith and Commissioner Bailey for being supportive of that. And with this infill housing ordinance, I saw a possible opportunity to do that, because I've not been able to get to the support from the majority of the commission to actually do something. And I approached the attorney two weeks ago and asked him to draft some language for a moratorium on the West Hancock Historic District, strictly the historic district as it was designated back in 1988. And he did that. After about six days or so, I got some language from him. I tweaked it a little bit, sent it back to him. But it was only this past Thursday that, after the mayor took a look at it, that I was told that the language of the moratorium was inappropriate procedure, and I'm hoping, you know, because I have been speaking with plenty of folks in the neighborhood, we've had multiple neighborhood meetings, lots of front porch conversations, lots of phone calls, emails, lots of concerns. And so I'd like the attorney to explain why it's inappropriate procedure to attach a commission-defined option asking for a moratorium on a neighborhood that is not impacted by the infill housing ordinance.
Certainly. The zoning ordinance is subject to its own set of procedures, and for text amendments, the zoning ordinance really only gives the mayor and commission two options, basically, to approve the ordinance or to reject the ordinance. Unlike a lot of other zoning ordinances where the ordinance may be delayed for up to 40 days, it may be sent back to the planning commission, it can have an amendment to the future land use map, but not an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So it's very strict in the procedure, and so the way I read the zoning ordinance and the zoning procedures law, you can't add things that are unrelated to that text amendment, because those would be violating the Chapter 4 of our zoning ordinance, which is the procedures ordinance. So that's why it couldn't be attached to the text amendment.
Guys, y'all ready to vote?
I'd just like to say something, Madam Mayor. I don't mean to be snotty here, but Commissioner Link just suggested that a majority of the commission was not supportive of something that she wanted to do. Well, one way to get us to be supportive is to ask us, you haven't had a single conversation with me about this, and I don't know about anybody else on the commission. So just, let's be collegial. And I'm willing to vote.
Okay. I don't think we need a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now you can go home.
Now I've got to excuse myself, Madam Mayor.
And this is the point in our meeting, that anyone that's here that wants to speak about anything that was not on our agenda tonight may come and address us.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, management staff, and all other concerned parties. Alvin Sheets, address is post office box 5142, Athens, Georgia 30604. Let me first thank all of those who are here and endured the night to stand with us on this request and finding a night robbery to continue to stay with us. Bless you for doing so. It has come to our attention that there's a lack of regard for the neighborhoods and communities of the historic West Hancock Avenue Community, National Register District. Officers and general body, those in attendance of the Athens Clark County branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, discussed and voted to support Commissioner Melissa Link's request for a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for certain demolition permits in this area. We're asking that you support the request for a demolition moratorium for one of Athens' most historic African-American neighborhoods, thereby leading to protection for this historic district, my apologies. A moratorium will allow time to complete the feasibility study conducted by Lord Aiken Sergeant Inc. In addition, a moratorium will allow time to review and react to the final feasibility study. The citizens in this district deserve all and any opportunity to preserve, to preserve the character, culture, and affordability of their neighborhood. Request requested respectfully submitted by the Athens Clark County NWA CP Unit 5180. My primary objective here was to make sure this is entered into the record, that the public viewing audience know that we're taking a stand on this, not to be confused with a blanket historic designation, for that might make it difficult for people to stay in their homes, and I think most of you understand that. In 1959, there was a song called "Open Our Eyes" by The Gospel Cliffs. One of the verses said, "With all that is provided, we're always hurting one another." The community is hurting folks, and we need for you to show some compassion and understanding for this area. Now, it's no secret where I stood for quite some time. We realize that we're being pushed out, priced out, taxed out of Athens Clark County. You've heard me say that the Trail of Tears is going to Overthaw, that's the path of least resistance. If you just look around you, you can see the change happening. The question is, are you going to be a part of the stopgap measure, or are you going to continue to let it change as it is? With that, I wish you the best of the night and the best of the year. Peace be with you.
Thank you, Alvin. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gretchen Elsner. I get my mail next, Berry, at box 562. I've been pretty heartbroken about what's been going on in the Dakotas, the Dakota Access Pipeline. People's arms have been getting blown off, they get shot in the head, their lives have been poked out, freezing water cannons, missiles, all that jazz. And then I've also been following some of the divestment movement, and one of the banks that is funding the pipeline is SunTrust. Athens Clark County does its business with SunTrust Bank. And then it occurred to me, like, well... And then it occurred to me, like, well, how awesome would it be if the financial committee said, okay, let's do business with Athens first? They're a local bank. They didn't get bailed out under TARP, or, you know, First American, you know, Georgia United Credit Union's a pretty awesome place, I do my banking there. And then I got even more excited about trying to understand exactly what that could mean in terms of our local economy. So I did some research on Standard and Poor's and Moody about the financial health of our county. And I have to hand it to you, Madam Mayor, all your years as tax assessor, you know, have really, really paid off.
Tax commissioner.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Anyway, I was only able to go back to about 2013. Moody says here that the county's tax base is sizable, and this was after three years of consecutive decline, $9.1 billion in 2013. That's the county's tax base. Our debt credit is considered very low, AA number-one rating long-term, mostly because we finance things through a local option sales tax. We have a very diverse economy, anchor of northeast Georgia, which is just totally amazing, you know? We're considered to be a really good bet because of long-term good management practices. So we really should be doing business with a local bank. We do not need to be sending all this money to SunTrust, and it's just lining the pockets of those in power who wish to profit off of our imminent destruction. And then I got to thinking about even more productive things, and I went and talked to Spencer Frye, our State House representative. And he told me about something called Pace Nation, Pace Funding, which he would be in support of if, you know, if this was something that Athens wanted to do. It would require the state legislature to pass a law allowing municipalities to offer bonds to homeowners and business owners, to put solar on their homes, on their businesses, to install energy-efficient windows, to put in better insulation, and they would pay back those loans to the county through a property tax assessment. So Pace Nation, P-A-C-E-N-A-T-I-O-N.us, it's called Property Assessed Clean Energy. You know, we put on the Solarize Athens campaign, and I personally feel it was kind of a failure. Less than 1% of the population actually went for it, and we brought the cost down 25% on top of the 30% tax credit, which we may very well lose. What are people going to do? So if that's something that you guys are interested in getting involved in with the state legislature, you've got a couple other things in front of you, and let's go local, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elsner.
And congratulations for all your good work.
Hi, my name is Chris Dowd. I live at 245 North Harris Street, and I want to second what Gretchen just said, for all the reasons that she just said it. But I just want to point out that Athens First is not a local bank anymore than it used to be. First American is the one that you'd want to go to, or a credit union. Just want to point that out.
Hello, this is the second time I spoke. This time, I have some really positive thoughts on the Bryan Street neighborhood, Southern Mill, and Creature Comforts. And I have one concern that I'd like to bring out in the open tonight, in the spirit of all the property owners. From what I can see, every property owner in the neighborhood, which my family is one of the, is the owner of one small parcel, over the last 20 years have all paid during when they bought the property fair market value. Southern Mill, with the recent acquisition of that property, paid fair market value. And I strongly believe, and I don't want anyone to misconstrue my concern tonight, that each of those property owners have a right to self-determination of what they're going to do with Southern Mill opening and with Creature Comforts coming in based on the zoning in the neighborhood, the industrial character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is zoned, employment-based, and industrial. It's that zoning is putting that neighborhood to revitalize that neighborhood. So the idea is that the properties there produce income, there's tax incentives for living wage jobs, there's a whole host of uses that we could use in that neighborhood to further and quicken the revitalization of it. However, it is not zoned for houses. Over the last two, two and a half years, I've had numerous conversations with people in economic development, and everybody agrees with that notion that it's going to stay an employment-based industrial neighborhood to produce jobs, to drive up people's incomes, to give them more security here in Athens Clark County. My comments tonight are limited to three vacant parcels of land, no one else's. It's the two vacant parcels on Miles Street and the one at the end of Bryan Street next to our mill house. I just want, I want the community to know, and I want the commission to know, that there will not be houses built there, even though the developer may want to do that that owns those three particular properties. My family will oppose that. And so if people are in the neighborhood looking for opportunities, new economy businesses, new startups, they do not have to worry about this undercurrent, consistent effort to put big, three-story, half-million-dollar houses on those three properties. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
Anyone else wish to speak to us? If y'all would, it's getting kind of late in the night. Those of you who want to speak, if you move to the aisles, that would help a little bit.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Davis, and I live at 117 Lenore Avenue. I'm a children's book author and illustrator, and Athens has been my home for 10 years. So I kind of, I have a question for Mayor Denson. Mayor Denson, you were kind enough to talk with me last week after President Trump had signed his executive order known as the Muslim Ban. I told you I was frightened for our immigrant communities in Athens, and I asked you to make a public statement of inclusivity like the one Mayor Kasim Reed has made. I was relieved when you told me that you also thought that the policies coming out of Washington were scary, and that you were also afraid for the immigrant, refugee, and undocumented communities in Athens. You even said you believe America needs undocumented workers, and that if they were all deported tomorrow, America would fall apart. But after telling me all this, you said you would not make a public statement of inclusivity. When I asked you why not, you claimed it would be divisive. Mayor Denson, why do you think Athens would be divided over celebrating our diverse community? Athens is black and white, Latino, Asian, and Middle Eastern. The Alhouda Islamic Center has a congregation of over 500 people. UGA has over 2,700 international students. 67 of them are from countries listed in the Muslim Ban. Athens Clark County has already voted against Donald Trump by a 72% majority. It's his policies that are trying to tear America's communities apart. A public statement, rather than being divisive, would bring us together. Mayor Denson, now is your chance to stand on the right side of history. Please, make a public statement of inclusivity and commit to supporting the kind of substantive policies that will serve and protect all Athenians. Thank you.
Hello, Abigail West, 149 Morton Ave. So I wanted to call everybody's attention that the state of Georgia has recognized February 15th of this year as a plastic pollution awareness day. And I wanted to read a good part of that resolution to you guys right now, if it would reappear on my phone. So it says, whereas the state of Georgia recognizes the importance of environmental sustainability, and whereas environmental sustainability is about making responsible decisions on corporate and personal levels that will mitigate negative impacts on the environment, and whereas each year in the United States, Americans throw away or recycle billions of water bottles and use approximately 500 million single-use disposable straws and up to 700 million single-use disposable bags, and whereas pollution affects life and resources on earth in profound ways, birds, fish, turtles, dolphins, sharks, and whales are killed by being entangled in ocean pollution or by eating non-biodegradable products, and harmful chemicals from certain products can be absorbed by the human body. And whereas Georgia businesses should strive to reduce their environmental footprint by developing and adopting improved environmental best practices, and whereas Georgia's citizens should consider a pledge to honor environmental sustainability by volunteering to aid in the cleanup of local streams, local streets, rivers, lakes, or beaches, and whereas the health and welfare of the environment and resources of this state depend in great measure upon the dedication of private and corporate citizens working together to achieve the common goal of sustainability. And I just wanted to ask all of you guys and anyone else listening to think, not just on February 15th, don't wait till next week, don't stop there, to think about your own personal decisions that you make, whether it's taking your reusable mug, or asking for a cup for here when you go get coffee, taking your reusable bag. These decisions really matter. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Laura Polanco. And I live at 72 Chulitnaway from Bogart. Climate change is the most pressing issue of our time. This is no longer a debate for 97% of academic scientists have agreed that humans are the cause. I am here today in support of banning or taxing single-use disposable plastic bags. This would appear to me to be a simple solution that would have a major impact on our environment, our health, and our participation in climate change reform. Facts, it takes 12 million barrels of oil to produce 500 billion plastic bags that we use each year. This puts 2.5 million tons of CO2 into the environment on the production alone. Plastic bags are the most pervasive contributor to ocean pollution, with 690 species of marine life impacted through digestion, entanglement, strangulation, and suffocation. Plastic bag recycling is costly and ineffective. On average, one ton of plastic bag costs $4,000, with a resale value of $32. Plastic bag is a massive litter problem, clogging waterways and sewers, is a huge burden on our landfills with only a 5% recyclability. Most importantly, plastics break down and affect our health. When oil, coal, trash, wooden plastics are burned, more than 100 different toxic chemicals are released, affecting our air quality and our respiratory systems. When plastics break down in landfills, rivers, and the oceans, BPAs are released, causing endocrine disruption diseases such as decreased fertility, diabetes, increased abortions and miscarriages. Young girls now enter puberty much earlier. Hormone imbalances occur, and many lead to cancers such as breast and prostate. The Center of Disease Control found 95% of urine samples that contain some amount of BPAs. So I will finish by saying that I think that the benefits outweigh much of the cost. LA, for example, reduced their plastic bags by 95%, including also the reduction of paper by 30%. San Jose reported reducing litter in the storm drains by 89%, 60% in creeks and rivers. So I would like to leave you with one thought. Is a moment of convenience worth the destruction of our bodies and our planet?
Thank you, Ms. Polanco.
Hi, I'm Chris Seguiucci. I live at 267 Franklin Street, and I'm a STEM teacher at Chase Street Elementary School. I'm glad you all decided to take some action on downtown development, but we need to think about, are the developers going to go next? They're probably going to be heading down towards my neighborhood and the Hancock neighborhood because we have some favorable zoning, and there's already some development action going on there, although we can't seem to find out many details about it. I think we need to put the brakes on that, and we need to make sure we develop this area the right way. Some of the area doesn't need to be developed. There's people that live there, Mr. Stroud, Mr. Diaz referred to some people that have been living there for a very long time, and they want to keep living there. And I want them to live there. Those are the people that make our neighborhood great. It's a diverse neighborhood, and I love it. So we need more time to let the West Broad feasibility study, which includes this area, to be completed, and everybody wants to see what the results of that are. And we don't want to see all the time and money that's been put into that go to waste. And like many others, I'm not sure what type of zoning is going to ultimately be appropriate for that area, or what the action plan, the best action plan is going to be. But we only have one Hancock corridor, and we only have one chance to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
April O'Enthal, 230 Nacouchi Avenue, Athens, Georgia 30601. I've never actually spoken to a public forum like this before, so I apologize, I don't have anything prepared. I'm just a citizen who just would like to be more active locally, and I thought that this would be a good forum to express some of my thoughts. So I, we just, first of all, I'm thankful that we have a democracy where I can use my voice, which is, I feel like a tool right now that I'm going to use as much as I can. And I just wanted to say I have a couple of, a lot of topics are very dear to my heart, but a couple right now. So the first would be, I'm happy that there is a moratorium. I'm learning that that is something that just happened, and I would urge you, the commission and the mayor, to please consider environmental concerns when you're thinking about the replanning or decisions that are made regarding downtown. I'm from New York City, so I actually never really used a car until I was 26, 30. I got my license when I was 30, so it's very easy to do that. We live in a place where you can walk 10 minutes downtown, but you can't bike safely. I have a young child, I'd love to be able to bike with her with the car-protected lanes. And so, and regarding like banning the bag, you know, banning or taxing the plastic bag, these are all really local, small things that can be done that really will, this is where it all begins, is like in local communities. And so I would just urge you to please make those decisions, you know, lead certified buildings would be wonderful, repurposing older, you know, bottle works, those are all lovely parts of Athens. Things like the GRIP and the Co-op. And slowing traffic down in those areas would also like encourage more local businesses to have more business, so. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up was the Muslim ban. So I understand that there was some refugees, 150 families, that wanted to come a couple of years ago. I just moved here a couple of years ago, so I wasn't aware of it at that point. But I just wanted to say that, you know, I've lived in many, I've lived in a couple of different countries, Israel, Australia. I've also worked on Indian health reservation, and I chose Athens, I could pretty much have chosen wherever I wanted to live, and I chose Athens, Georgia, because of the diversity and the culture. And I would just hope that if there's an opportunity to welcome refugees at this time, I would really appreciate that in any way that we could do that for our families. Because I just think about in the 1940s, you know, if people enjoyed me and the same things had happened, it would have been, I just think about that. So, you know, thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing to use my voice to say what I want to say. Thank you.
Hope it gets better.
Thanks.
Rukaya Bouya, 355 Mulligan Way. I'm here on behalf of Bag2Bag and as a citizen of Athens Clark County for the past 10 or 11 years. I grew up here, and I'm really passionate about passing a bag fee here in Athens. There's two pieces of information that really sort of knocked me into sight and sort of, you know, made me want to, want this to happen in Athens Clark County. One is the average usable lifespan of a plastic One is the average usable lifespan of a plastic bag is 12 minutes. When you think about that, something that will stay in our environment for millions, thousands if not millions of years, only has a lifespan to us 12 minutes, which if you think about it logically, doesn't make sense, you know? You can use a reusable bag that will last you a lifetime, but that plastic bag will only last you 12 minutes. Another piece of information is that, on average, more than 8 million metric tons enter our oceans every year. Again, something that just doesn't make sense. And every city, big or small, makes adds to that number. And if we as a city can change that and enforce a fee or a ban, even though a lot of you guys are skeptical, I think that that would make a difference not only to our community here in Athens, but then to our state and then to our country, making a difference, you know, that would improve our environment in the long run for our children and for our grandchildren and for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
To Mayor Denson and to this gathered body, I am Reverend Winfried Holt, pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church, Athens. For three to seven years in a church that is 138 years old, I'm here to express some concerns about the prohibition pertaining to not being able to demolish, because of the moratorium, a piece of property that has been deemed unsafe, a piece of property that has been given business status that the church uses as an office annex on the Reece Street side of Ebenezer Baptist Church here in Athens. If someone wants the property, you don't have to pay for it. I'll pay you to remove it off of premises. It has been given to us based upon some authoritative information that the structure was deemed unsafe, thus we moved our nursery out of it in terms of six, five years old and under to another unit. It was tested for asbestos, and that's unsafe all by itself. Ebenezer is desirous, and we've got plans already drawn, but they've been put on hold at the moment to demolish that structure and then replace it with an office complex on the same property. It is urgent that you would give some consideration to providing special exemption, not so much for the whole corridor, but special exemption for that 957 piece of property that is on the Reece Street side of Ebenezer. We would appreciate it greatly. We are handcuffed without your support on the one hand and cooperation on the other. The building was formerly a residence, but now it's Ebenezer's office complex, and that designation was given in May of 2004, and we have sought to use it wisely and continue to do so. But my office is still there, but, and others have visited there, even in the conference room of that place. But I'm here to speak on behalf of the Ebenezer family, the congregation of Ebenezer, for consideration if no one wants to remove it from the property, to give us permission to have it demolished so that we can get some other plans approved, that we can continue with the business of trying to keep some folk out of jail and keep some folk out of trouble and trying to keep some folk out of their own way of pertaining to their lifestyles and some other matters as a result of Ebenezer's ministry in this region. We need your help, that's all we're asking.
Reverend Hope, I want to clarify something, though. There's not a moratorium on that area, sir?
Yet.
And it's not likely to be anytime in the foreseeable future.
Okay.
But have you applied for demolition permit?
That's put on hold because some things start floating in the air. We have the contracts already ready. They have not been submitted yet because we're trying to find out just what our status is in this capacity. But the paperwork has been done. The paperwork is ready for submission, but that has been temporarily put on hold, and that has necessitated my presence to stand before you tonight to ask for a special exemption for that single piece of property at 957 at Ebenezer.
I'll discuss this with Mr. Berryman, you know, outside of the public arena here because we're taking a lot of people's time. But I think there's a way for us to help you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much, and thank you.
Hi, my name is Casey Nissenbaum. I live at 326 Glen Haven Avenue. I am an area schoolteacher, and I was coming to speak about my neighborhood. I live in the West Hancock Historic Corridor, and I am very friendly with many of my neighbors. We are, everyone in the neighborhood I've spoken with is incredibly concerned about the encroaching development. I applaud the commission for the moratorium on downtown. I applaud the commission for the infill housing. I think we're moving in the right, right direction. The problem is, is there is some concern that those two movements will bring developers to our neck of the woods. Now, Mayor Denson, I know you've said a moratorium is a dirty word in your vocabulary, but if not a moratorium, then how can we halt progress and demolition of residential properties without proper time for study? I live in a multifamily neighborhood, it's a multi-family, yet every house around me can't be more than two-bedroom, one-bath. And I believe we do need that time. We need some time to get the neighborhood together. We're currently, we're creating a Neighborhood Homeowners Association. We have dozens of signatures on a petition for a moratorium of development, of residential, of demolition. And I just, I'm very concerned. And a lot of really nice people from the neighborhood have come in here and sat here for hours with their concerns, but they're representative of scores more. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. My name is Matthew Epperson. I live at 835 Hill Street, and that's 30606. I first wanted to thank you all for your hard work. I know this isn't easy, and sitting, we all sitting here for three hours, and this is quite, taking quite a lot of concentration to stay with everyone's thoughts and comments, and people come up here with so many well-informed ideas. It's just, I applaud everyone up here and all of you sitting out here as well. I've been thinking also a lot about the recent developments with the Trump administration and the ways that we can locally respond to those things. And two proposals have already been mentioned tonight that I just wanted to endorse. The first is to move our funds locally. I would love to see all of our funds out of this Clark County move to a local bank. That's one way that we can follow the lead of other progressive cities such as Seattle that have moved their funds toward local banks as a way to divest from those other interests. The second of which is, I second the call to you, Madam Mayor, Denson, to make a statement to be, that we are supportive of immigrants in our community. I do not believe we can hide behind the word of the fear that it is divisive to do so. I think to be against divisiveness is not divisive. I believe we are united in that belief, and we are a nation of immigrants, and we need to recognize that we are all immigrants in this land. And I believe that that is the right thing to do. It is our moral right and obligation to do so. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I missed that.
Start again.
It happened when I come up here. I'm Barbara Sims at 160 G U Street, Athens, Georgia. Madam Mayor and to the commissioners, I want to first say I do appreciate you all for what you do for our community and just keeping us a loving community. Thank you so much. But I do have a concern. And on behalf of the residents in the community affected by the application for special use of multifamilies, we are requesting that your, that the application be stopped for a future review. Mayor and Commissioner, there are numerous residents that are not aware or perhaps just recently learned of this request. In representing the Hancock corridor and the surrounding community, it is my belief future consideration of the residents' choice needs to be considered. So please, please remember, as it has always, has already been said, there's only one Hancock corridor, and we want to preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you all for staying here and doing your job. We appreciate you so much. My name is Mark McConnell. I live at 2510 Commerce Road, Athens, Georgia. And once again, I went to pick up an agenda outside, and guess what? There aren't any because we don't have, I don't know, this is not the first time. And I also would like to know, when did that clock stop? Does anybody know?
If this clock was gonging on every 15 minutes, I think everybody would want to get out of here.
But do we know when it stopped?
I don't know, no.
Well, I bet you the CO2 levels in the atmosphere were way lower than they are now. They're up above 400, and it's, things are really bad, and we can't roll back time.
I can't resist asking you something, Mark. Do you really want us to cut down a lot of trees to have excess agenda items out there every month?
Well, you know what we could do?
We don't have this kind of a...
We recycle really good. We could use recycled paper to print them on, and you could even have a thing where people could just push a button and it would spit one out if they need one. That's totally feasible. We're in the 21st century now. We've got really nice cameras in here, but if you go out in the hallway and you try to listen or watch what's going on, it's like the clock. It's like time stood still, we're in the 60s or something. I mean, I haven't seen a TV that small in that square in like, I don't know, at least a bunch of years unless you go to the Reece store, and they've got some in there. But I'd like to pass the hat around and ask everybody to throw in 20 bucks, and let's get a big flat screen and put it out in the hallway. If there's so many people that show up here on a regular basis, how about we get a bigger venue to put people in or at least have a sitting room somewhere in the building that's got a nice TV where people can sit and they can actually watch what's going on? Because you're out in the hallway, you have no idea. I have no idea what agenda item we're on. I don't, you know, I think everybody's the same way out there. I'm looking out there, the reporters, they're sitting in the corner on the stairs because that's the only place you can hear. We could fix that. But that's not really what I came up here to talk about. That's just what happened to me while I was here. I picked this up on the way up here from down on College Avenue. It's a plastic cup. Yep, more plastic. It was on its way to a storm drain. Everybody knows those storm drains, they go to the river. This thing would wind up somewhere down the Oconee, somewhere on its way out to the ocean, probably not make it there, turn into 100 million little pieces and then be digested by animals and whatnot and becomes part of our food system again. The little things that we can do that can make a difference. The ban on plastic bags, please, please. I mean, it's not that big of a thing. We can get around that. People, you can bring your own bag. We can, we can get around having unrecyclable stuff in our community. I go to Champy's. I ask for a water. Oh my God, they brought in a Styrofoam cup again. I'm like, I'm never coming back here. Why can't we ban things like this from our community? We can do without it. We'll adapt. We can adapt to these things. You know, the world is melting. It really is, you know? And right now with the way the political thing is, you know, who knows what's going to happen? I woke up this morning, there were no bombs going off. I was like, yes, good, I can go to work again. Thank you all so much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, and I echo, I am Linda Davis, 167 Peach Street, Athens, 30606. I too am from the west side of Athens, not just necessarily the corridor. But I'm here just to say that, one, I appreciate all the work that you guys do. You've been very supportive and heard sort of some things that I think are going to actually address my concerns. But I am here to ask that we consider extending our local historic district to match the footprint of the national historic district. And I understand that there are many properties in that community that even the owners don't even want them to become historic. But there are certain icons that are a part of our community that I would like to see us preserve and have protected, and that is what I would like to see us do, is look at preservation from the standpoint of particular structures and not necessarily an entire geographic area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linda.
I just want to take 30 seconds to, one minute to reiterate about House Bill 144. I just checked online, and legislative day 13 is still showing, so hopefully it won't be passed tomorrow. But there, the bill is worth reading. It's, it seems like it's about six pages, and a lot of it's what is already in the law, which some of it's good, some of it's bad. But puppy mills is a terrible thing. It's amazing how many Amish people in Pennsylvania, they don't have televisions, but they abuse these female dogs. I mean, it's just horrific what happens in this country to farm animals and non-farm animals that are sold as produce and products. But I would like your, your Honor, the mayor and county commission members to contact your lobbyist, if you would, and contact your representative about this bill. The most offensive part is that section 244, which prohibits you from really regulating these pet stores that sell, and I don't think we have any pet stores in Clark County that actually sell pets now, and I think maybe one or two still in Oconee County. But it's terrible, some of the things in the bill that's already in the law. I know that just recently Michigan passed a bill, a law prohibiting the communities in that state from adopting a plastic bag ban. And I've read the 12 minutes before, but most people spend more than 12 minutes going to the store and back, so I think the shelf life is more than 12 minutes. But the gentleman who says he asked for water and they gave him a Styrofoam cup, he can take his own cup, and I do it all the time. But anyway, I do appreciate y'all staying late. I know I went over my 30 seconds, but House Bill 144, and it's line 244, is the part that prohibits you from taking any kind of action on pet stores that sell animals. But there's other things in the bill that this would be an opportune time to try to get the law changed. So I appreciate that and appreciate your attention. Thanks. Oh, I just want to say, in China, they stopped using plastic bags in one day. They announced on a Tuesday they weren't going to be using them, and the next day they stopped. So I know we don't have that ability here.
I'm sure this is America.
I know. It's People's Republic of China, not the Republic of China. Thank you.
My name is Donna Thurman. I live at 145 Leanne Drive, 30601. I, like a whole lot of people, have been sitting here for hours listening to this, and I wanted to ask a question about the moratorium that was not linked, and I understand that it's legally not appropriate or we can't do that at this time. My question is, when things come up on the agenda like this, what recourse does a neighborhood have when things come up with timing that we don't have a chance to look at? What recourse do we have? I understand in this particular one that, you know, it's really not legal, I guess, to attach it to whatever it is, but what recourse does the community have? If we don't have a moratorium, we can't get here, you know, we don't hear about these things in time, what recourse do we have?
Donna, I have broken the rule that we don't interact with it. It's not something I can get into it in this kind of venue. We can talk outside sometime and be glad to.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your patience. Broderick Flanagan, 1645 East Broad Street. I just want to kind of speak to... I just want to kind of speak to some of the things that were discussed earlier. I was glad the young lady that spoke a few speakers ago brought up the fact of the Neighborhood Association. Kind of want to remind everybody, that's one of the reasons why the Infill Housing Ordinance was actually brought up to, to become a thing, was because of development that was happening in the Five Points community. Their Neighborhood Association, you know, got an email via their listserv, because any time you have a Neighborhood Association in a community, they have to be notified of incoming like development or demolition or whatnot. So that, I think that's key in, you know, helping to inform the community about, you know, different developments coming. Because of the out-of-character, you know, development coming to the Five Points area, what they did was they, them in that Neighborhood Association, along with the Planning Commission, were able to come up with an actual ordinance. So I think that's what needs to happen for some of the other neighborhoods. I'll be working in East Athens to form a Neighborhood Association. I would love help. I mean, I already spoke to Bruce Solani in the Planning Department, and they offer, you know, help and assistance with helping to form Neighborhood Associations. That way, those neighborhoods will be notified when those type of developments are happening, and they'll be able to challenge the ones that are out of character, that will ultimately displace people, because that's ultimately what's happening. I understand that development is key and is needed, but we can develop in a way that doesn't, you know, push people out of their neighborhoods, especially as we heard from a lot of elders in the community here tonight. You know, also, just want to kind of, you know, thank, you know, you guys for at least, you know, adhering to some of the thoughts and ideas that are coming up tonight, and I look forward to, to working with you in the future about, you know, coming up with solutions to some of the impending developments in some areas. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, we're going to come behind the rail, and we're at the point now where we hear from our Mayor and Commissioner and our management people. And I am going to make a quick statement. The young lady that spoke to me, it was, was not quite exactly accurate what our conversation was because, but I will say that, that our, that our Mayor and Commissioner, our public safety people are committed to protecting everyone in this community. Our police officers are not ICE. And so there's, there will be every effort made to protect the, the safety and of a, an undocumented immigrant as somebody that's lived here 20 years. So there's no reason for anybody to have fear. But, but I'm not going to take on the state or the federal government with statements from the Mayor. So, and what I have to bring forward to you tonight is that I, to begin with, I would like to thank the ADDA Parking Director Chuck Horton, and all the ACC and ADDA staff that were involved in the replacement of the pay and play, pay and display meters downtown. As of this week, all of our meter, metered parking has individual meters for each parking space that accept credit cards as well as cash. I'm very pleased that all our meters now are uniform, working, and easy to understand by the public. We have some adopt ordinances. We, I found this interesting when Mark brought the plastic cup up here, because every time we have people taking on, picking up garbage after other people, I think if people just wouldn't throw it down to begin with, we wouldn't have this problem. But I really appreciate those people who are willing to go out and pick up trash after other people. Trail Creek Greenway is going to be maintained by UGA Partners in Health. The Barnett Shoals Road from Lexington Highway to Stroud Road will be maintained by the Bag a Bag Group from University of Georgia. Buddy Christian Way is going to be maintained by the Clark County Police Department. And Deering Street, Waddell Henderson Extension from Evan Street to South Rock, Rock Spring, has been adopted for maintenance by our Athens-Clark County Leadership Team, which I think is extremely commendable and unusual. And this is department directors, managers, the municipal court judge, the probate court judge, the sheriff, the auditor, and the tax commissioner. And this is, these individuals on their own time, this is not assigning staff to do it. So I would like to, to give a big thank you to all of our staff people for that, because I think it's pretty awesome. We have a new member to our TSPLO Citizen Committee. Mildred Beck had to step aside, and Nikima Stovall will replace her. And I have something to refer to, GOC, which is Government Operations, for those who don't know the acronym. And it's, this is to review and make recommendations on bus stop improvements. And I think most of us realize that we've got a $2 million, on bus stopping improvements, that we've got a $2 million transit grant. And I'd like for us to, to look at that and see if we want to change some of those procedures and rules and regulations as to where they can go. So, yeah, I thought you would, Andy. And, let's see, and animal control, a review of animal control ordinance, LRC. And I'm going to leave that pretty broad, and we can, can tie down what some of the issues are at a later date, but I'm going to go ahead and assign that to LRC. Do you have anything for us, Mr. Williams?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Maddox?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bearman?
No, ma'am.
Nobody think anything more to say? Okay, we're going to hear from our Commissioners now. We'll start with Mr. Handby, clockwise around the room, and...
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then with Ms. Bell.
And I was hoping to address Ms. Thurman before she stepped out and, and let her know. And perhaps you can let her know this, when you talk to her about the 90-day demolition review ordinance that was passed, certainly if a building that is 50 years old or older applies for demolition, it goes to the sitting Commissioner in whose district it is, and that district has an option of putting a 90-day hold on that piece of property to review what, if there is a desire for a historic district, or, or maybe some other possible outcome. So there is some recourse available to those folks who are affected by this. And, you know, we've heard tonight the words forced out and pushed out, and that's horrible that's happening. And what I'd like to know, and I don't know how we can find this out, but Manager Williams or whoever could send us the names of the people who have been forced out or pushed out of their homes for one reason or another. I'd like to know that information. I don't know how you can get it, but I suspect, I'd be real interested to see if there's, who has actually been forced out of their home here in Athens-Clark County.
Well, my wife talked about that the other day, but I managed to stay. Yeah. Regarding West Hancock, yesterday, I received a call from an agent of the property owner of the Varsity and Dairy Queen and those, those areas we're talking about, who called me to tell me, "We have no plans. We've made no plans. We've drawn no plans. We have no plans." So I said, "Are you sure?" He said, "Yes, Jerry, I'm absolutely sure." And I really hope that you'll spread the word, that, that nothing is planned.
And the Varsity's not moving to Epps Bridge Park, correct?
They have no plans to move the Varsity. So that's where that is.
They had the same conversation with me, and I think other Commissioners as well.
Yeah. So the other thing is that there are four Commissioners, and there would be five if we invited them, I'm quite sure, or even six, who are going to work on an action plan for West Hancock, as I said earlier. So we are committed to doing all that we can to relieve the pressure, to find ways for the character of the neighborhood to be preserved. And that doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a historic district, but we, we will find some ways to do that. And some of them are not that difficult. So just assured, be assured that we are going to try. Thank you.
I did have some topics I was going to talk about, but I think that if we could move quickly to the misinformation that has come to the podium in frustration and concern, it's apparent to me that there is a lot of misinformation out there, and as soon as that can be addressed and communicated with the variety of concerns that came forward, I would appreciate it. I'm answering them as best I can online, and maybe this is one of the things where when there were super district Commissioners, that Commissioners worked in teams so that information is, you know, teamed up and making sure that it's communicated accurately. So I would just like for the information to be consistent and accurate, so that all of us can address, because concerns are coming forward that aren't accurate. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody from West Hancock who came out tonight. There are lots and lots of rumors flying around town, and, you know, folks hear about studies going on, and, you know, and redevelopment plans, and, you know, moratoriums put on downtown, and new regulations put on, on nearby neighborhoods, and property values go up, their taxes go up. And zoning is a difficult thing to wrap your head around, you know, and, and most folks have a hard time understanding it. So I hope that we can have the kind of outreach and the kind of, kind of multi-leveled and nuanced discussion about this neighborhood, because it is a very unique neighborhood. It's a very diverse neighborhood. It is a historic neighborhood, yet it's own multifamily. It is one of the last bastions of truly affordable housing in our in-town community, and we need to keep it that way. You know, we do have an Infill, or Affordable Housing Study that stated quite clearly that, you know, the kind of affordable housing we really need is that modest, single-family housing in our desirable places. So I hope that, that the Hancock neighborhood can remain modest and affordable, and, you know, and retain the character, because there's a whole lot of history in that community, and every single one of those buildings tells a story about that community. And, you know, as they come down, those stories get lost. So I, I hope that, you know, this conversation will continue, and that we'll do what needs to be done to appropriately protect the neighborhood and preserve it.
Mr. Gerst. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick things. One, I want to thank everybody who's come to the Envision Athens sessions. The one I attended last week was very well attended and really represented a broad swath of the community, and I was excited to see that. And I think that bodes well for that plan moving forward. There is, of course, a public meeting that I have a flyer for in front of me on April 20th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Classic Center, that sort of is going to represent the next phase of that. And so I'm, I'm hoping everybody who was at one of the earlier sessions comes out again, as well as other folks. I want to briefly mention another community need that can be taken care of next week and the following, and that is for parents of young children. The Clark County School District has registration for their early learning, pre-K and kindergarten programming. And so for you, your friends, your neighbors, people in your neighborhood, please make them aware of that. That's at the H.T. Edwards Complex, all next week and the following.
Mr. Sims.
Yes, ma'am. As we go through and get ready for, you know, all of these different studies that we've got, and of course, the next major one, in addition to the 20-year, the Envision 20-Year Plan, is the fact that we do have our comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan was last tweaked in 2000. Being the only Commissioner on the committee when that was done, so I have to be, take the blame, if you know, for the way it looks, since, you know, like I said, I voted for the plan. You know, the plan wasn't perfect, it never has been. That's why we make changes in those things. Again, we'll have that opportunity again, when we get ready to do this comprehensive plan, to make some changes, you know? When we talk about looking at properties or multifamily, or the single family, remember when you downsize, you downzone, you decrease the value of your property. So don't, you know, your property may have been assessed at one price by virtue of the fact that because it was multifamily, it was priced that, that when you downzone it, then the price goes down, so if you ever wanted to sell it. But the thing is, we want to have neighborhoods. Now, I think that's one of the things that we can start, be, at the top of that list as we do this comprehensive plan, is to look at this West Hancock Corridor as part of that, that's the major change that we probably want to look at, is changing, you know, the zoning, because that's what's creating the problem, is the zoning. So let us, you know, be thinking about that as we get ready to move forward with that. Yeah, we may end up at some point in time having a moratorium to basically deal with that, but, you know, right now, this may not be the time for us to deal with a particular moratorium that has all of us jumping up and down and the sky falling, and it's not quite falling yet. So just please be patient with us. We don't get it right all the time, but we working at to make it better for the citizens of Athens-Clark County. One other thing, I have a request. We are already talking about looking at permitted parking in, as an overall whole, but I would like us to look at an area around Mulberry and Popular Streets for permitted parking. Mulberry is a very narrow street, and part of the parking issue there is the fact that our partner, the University of Georgia, charges employees for parking on their campus. So Mulberry has become a parking lot for people who would prefer not to pay the $30 to the University of Georgia, $40, whichever one it is now, to the University of Georgia. So they park there, and it makes it difficult for people to traverse there, and even the people that actually live on the street have a problem with parking. So we want to maybe look at that particular street for a particular parking permitted plan that we program that we already have in place.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got something pretty important to share, and I hope everybody will keep their eyes open. On Saturday, February the 4th, one of, a student, an age, age 15, Perry Claire Thomas, was last seen. She ran away from home. She's on the east side of Athens, over in Snap Finger. That's where her, her family is. She's 5'4", weighs 120 pounds, has hazel-blue eyes and long brown hair. I mean, if you have any information, we encourage you to contact Athens-Clark County Police Department Sergeant Daniel at 613-3888. There is, there are postings. Her father's name is Mark Thomas. If you're on Facebook, you can go there and get updates, maybe friend him or whatever. But it's pretty serious. They're really concerned about her safety. So if everybody could keep their eyes open for any, any information you may learn about that. On a lighter note, Envision Athens, last week, we had our five public meetings, very well attended, probably 600 or 700 people showed up for those. We also had 22 focus group meetings that occurred. A lot of really good information, a lot of themes, you know, a lot of recurring themes through that process. However, there were, I did get a fair number of emails and stuff from people who just, for whatever reason, couldn't make those times or meetings. There is an online form. If you go to envisionathens.com, I think it's under Resources, or maybe, it may be, actually, I think they've got a different tab, may say Learn More or something. It's the first tab at the top. If you click on that, it'll take you to the online form, and you can complete that. And I encourage you to complete it if you did not make those meetings. February the 13th, a week from yesterday, we are having a community assessment at the Classic Center. We'll get more information about, that will inform the process. The public is welcome to that. And then April 20th, as Commissioner Gerst mentioned, and these, I did put some flyers, I think Jeff left some out in the, in the foyer out there, the hallway. You can pick those up as well, just as a reminder. Gives you a little bit of information, if you're not familiar with our process, on the back as well. The, a couple other things, I encourage you guys to support the Girl Scouts. I don't have Girl Scouts, I have a Boy Scout, but, but I like cookies. They do, I believe, take orders up until the 13th of February. So you have another week or so to get, to get those orders in. And then I encourage you to mark your calendars. I think we just got information about Twilight, April 28th through the 29th, they're going to be back on the old route, which is awesome. So they'll be going down Clayton Street. And then May 20th is the Marigold Festival in Winterbowl. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrod.
I would just like to wish my wife a very lovely birthday today.
Well, it's her birthday...
Since it's almost over.
It's, it's almost over, Andy, I'm sorry.
It's almost over.
Ms. Bell, you're going to, you're going to send us off, but, but give me a chance to say something before you ask for adjournment.
Okay. First, I want to say how wonderful I think it's been to have the people that are here tonight, that have been here tonight, but to know we can talk about a whole lot of things, whether we agree on it or don't agree on it, but at least we can talk about it and discuss it and try to make things better. Second, remind you of our time with the student government tomorrow at the University of Georgia in the Miller Learning Center at 8 o'clock. So we got to get home and get a nap and get back to that. And thank y'all for a wonderful evening. It's been good. It's been long, but it's been good. It's been good.
Well, what I wanted to do was to remind people, this was in a day's paper, this was in Tuesday's paper, and I was going to chide Jim Thompson a little bit. This should have been on the front page, not in the obituary page, where one of our police officers ended an armed standoff at Athens Regional Hospital. And it, he was, he, it's Officer, he's Sergeant Raymond Von Anderson, a traffic unit supervisor. He was off duty. He heard a call for help at the hospital. He dropped everything, went, as all of our public safety people do, anytime they're needed, and probably would have, we would have had a tragedy if he had not been there to step in. So I commend him, but next time, Jim, look at the front page, please.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
You have a second, all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.